Georgia, Georgia, yeah. Georgia can start early. By law, we can't start before the tenth, right?
That is correct.
When I was driving through South Carolina on my way back from the DC, there was no starting office this week.
I felt like it was late this year.
We are late this year.
We start around August 25th, 2016.
I do too.
For my kids.
But then we also got out from there. They still, DC still.
Do they go back to the library?
No, but it's right.
The school board of Duval County School District is now convening its regular monthly meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone. And to everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. The vision statement of Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or career and life." The mission statement of the Duval County School Board is to provide educational excellence in every school and every classroom for every student, every day. The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operation of this school, of the district, are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The Agenda Committee meeting for the September 12, 2022, School Board Meeting will be held on August 16, 2022, at 9:00 a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comments portion of the board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing where the COVID-19 community level is designated as high. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's level is currently designated as high. We thank you for taking the time to join us for this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. I will now invite board members in the audience to invite you to stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have our school presentation from District Two, Chet's Creek Elementary School, and I'll call on Principal Susan Phillips. Hello, how are you?
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight to share a little bit about the Chet's Creek Learning Community. Our school is an A-rated school that has earned the distinction of the Florida Department of School of Excellence, and for a quarter of a century, we have served the Beach Haven area of Jacksonville, ending this past year with an enrollment of 1,142 Creekers. With over 27 languages spoken by our wonderful families, we strive to honor and celebrate the richness our diversity affords. A partnership with the Mackenzie Noel Wilson Foundation initiated over 10 years ago gave us the opportunity to open an academic resource center in the middle of our largest neighborhood so that we could support students where they lived. This partnership has now been extended to allow this neighborhood of students participation in programs through the Mackenzie Wilson Boys and Girls Club year-round. As a leadership academy, students are able to step forward and contribute through classroom Seasons of Giving projects, participation in our Young MCs or Men of Chivalry Club, Girls on the Run, a principal's advisory committee, as a part of our large and inclusive Safety Patrols program, and through a partnership with the Department of Defense in implementing the Anchored for Life Service Club. We also provide a large extended day program for families. And a number of years ago, one of our teachers founded a robust community education program that provides students with opportunities to learn the art of various types of dance or take lessons in violin, viola, cello, and even the ukulele. We routinely work to encourage our local churches and businesses to partner with us as valued community resources. Our very active and hard-working PTA provides programming and opportunities to involve our families in school life through monthly family nights and countless opportunities for volunteering. What truly makes it such a special place, though, are the people who learn and lead every day within the walls of our beautiful building. Expertly skilled teachers, a warm and supportive staff, and amazingly unique and talented students. And let's take a second to hear from them.
Welcome to Chet's Creek Elementary.
This school is awesome. We are a school filled with lots of love, lots of fun, lots of learning.
Students get outside their comfort zones and continually grow and achieve.
So one of the things that makes our school special is our commitment to the three Rs. There are pillars, and we're built on relationships, risks, and results. We pride ourselves on the relationships that we build with our students and being invested in their education and trying to provide them with the best experiences. And then, of course, that extends out into the community and the relationships that we seek to build with our parents. We work really hard here to find experiences for students that connect to the real world and enable them to take risks, work through problems in order to find solutions. The third R is results, and we pride ourselves on achieving great results here at Chet's Creek Elementary. We have always been an A-rated school, and a lot of that is due to the relationships that we have with our students and with each other as colleagues, as well as the risks that we take in working with students in the classroom.
At Chet's Creek Elementary, there's a theme that's incorporated every year. The teachers use that to keep the kids motivated, keep the classroom environment fun, and just keep the kids learning and pulling in that theme.
We have a multitude of learners. I love it when I can reach a learner that I thought maybe I couldn't reach, and when that light bulb goes on, it is phenomenal.
We're getting even better with almost $22 million in improvements.
Yo amo Chet's Creek Elementary.
When we first started looking for elementary schools for our son, we toured several in the Daxmo area and were a bit intimidated the first time we came to Chet's because it's a large school, but then have since learned that it's actually a large family, and it runs incredibly well. Our family believes the old adage that it takes a village, and Chet's Creek Elementary has absolutely become our village. Once a Creeker, always a Creeker. Join us at Chet's Creek Elementary School, where the learners of today are the leaders of tomorrow.
And this coming year, our new school theme will take us on an expedition to plant our flag of continuous growth firmly at Camp Creek with exploration beyond all boundaries. Outside is the new inside, and this year, we're going to pitch our tents, blaze the trails, hike to new heights as we head out into the wilderness on adventure. We'll continue to push the limits in an effort to make lasting memories for our student campers who need to know they are safe and loved and part of a classroom and school family that supports and believes in them. We will be bravely pursuing the unknowns of new standards, new curriculum, new expectations, and new assessments. There will be opportunities for all of our learners to lead as we figure out how to summit the mountain of success together. To earn results in this new frontier, we're going to focus on deepening our instructional work in the basics, reading, writing, math, and science. This quest will allow us to continue to uncover the very best ways to set goals and plan for each student's specific learning needs while also mapping out support and extension of their unique and individualized learning paths. At Camp Creek, we're ready to explore and discover the very best ways to engage and reach ourselves and our campers with an adventurous spirit. For 25 years, our learning community has remained a place where all leaders and every single learner is safe to dream of the unknown, experiment with ideas, and experience the thrill of success by creating lifelong relationships, taking strategic risk, and earning exemplary results year after year. Thank you so much again for having me here tonight.
Thank you so much, Principal Phillips. Stay right there. I'm sure board member Anderson would love to say a few words about your wonderful school.
Of course, I would. First of all, thank you so much, Principal Phillips, for being here tonight, for representing Chet's Creek so well. And I want to take a minute to just acknowledge the incredible dedication you've had to our county for as long as you have been here, not just at Chet's Creek, but in your development of leaders that now serve schools all over Duval County Public Schools. So several principals learned to lead under Principal Phillips, and they have become incredible principals, not only in District Two, but all over. And I think that it really is a testament to the climate and culture that you create in your schools, or in your school, Chet's Creek. And they take that out into the schools that they serve as well. And I think that our students benefit, our communities benefit because of leadership like yours and what you have given to thousands of children and hundreds of educators. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think that the three Rs, relationships, risks, and results, is incredible, and I think it's something that we can all learn from. Although Chet's Creek has 1,100-plus students on any given year, within that building, there are 200-plus students that may be on free and reduced lunch. And in some schools and some neighborhoods, that might be a Title I school. And so your willingness for you as a leader, but also the staff, to think outside the box, to meet children where they are, to build those relationships, no matter what they bring into the building, and to meet their academic needs regardless of the barriers they face, is really, really impressive. So thank you so much. And lastly, I am so excited that I get to say I am proud to be a Creeker and that you will be taking care of my own little one as we start kindergarten this year. So thank you. I can't wait to join the large Creeker family and explore this year. We're so excited about exploring at Camp Creek and knowing that once we are Creeker, we will always be a Creeker. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your dedication, your service.
Thank you very much.
Once again, thank you, Principal Phillips, and all the Creeker family out there. We appreciate that. And the video was a wonderful testament to what's going on in the school, so I just really appreciate us being able to showcase that. So we're going to move on to our presentations for this evening. Ms. Brianna Nelson-Canty will go ahead with those recognitions and presentations.
Our first recognition highlights someone who has played a role in leading the district's athletic department for over a decade. Ms. Tammy Tally was recently recognized as the National, that is, the National Athletic Director of the Year by the National High School Athletic Coaches Association. Having started her career as a coach at high schools in the district before becoming an athletic director, Ms. Tally has dedicated her life to the advancement of student success across Team Duval. Ms. Tally has stated that winning such an award for doing a job that she absolutely loves and gets paid to do is unreal. Joining her in the studio today is Regional Superintendent Tim Simmons and Chief of Schools, Scott Snyder. Ms. Tally is receiving a Superintendent Coin of Excellence this evening for her commitment to student success. Please join us in congratulating Ms. Tammy Tally. Next, we honor an A. Philip Randolph student who achieved a high-level award at the Skills USA National Competition. Tristan Copes competed at the national level for Skills USA in June under the Carpentry Division. He was tasked with building a small-scale version of a house. While a small scale of a home, this project was constructed from nothing, starting with a blueprint and ending with the finished piece, complete with rafters, a window, and a porch. Tristan's family stated he has always had a love for working with his hands. Having received his first set of power tubes at the age of 10, he continued to learn new skills and began building and installing fixes, gates, and more as he got older. Tristan used the skills acquired and his natural talent to win top marks at the national competition and was awarded gold. Tristan was under the direction of his teacher facilitator, Mr. Mike Burke. Mr. Burke and Principal Flynn joined him today as he is recognized for this achievement. Tristan is receiving a Superintendent Coin of Excellence for this amazing accomplishment. Please join us in congratulating Tristan Copes. Also shining their talent at the Skills USA National Competition was a Frank H. Peterson student. Our next recognition highlights Jasmine Foster, who competed in aesthetics, also known as the cosmetology competition, during the Skills USA Conference, where she placed 20th in the nation. Her competition consisted of performing a basic facial, a trendy makeup look, and a fantasy makeup look. In addition to the creative portion of the competition, she had to complete a written exam, give an oral presentation, and present a portfolio completed with a picture and written description of her fantasy look. Jasmine stated she learned to be confident in her skills and to be proud of the work she does, no matter how others feel. Her teacher facilitator, Ms. Adina McCall, and Principal Mastromato, joined her here this evening. For her accomplishment, Jasmine is receiving a Superintendent Coin of Excellence. Please join us in congratulating Jasmine Foster on her achievement. Also, from Frank H. Peterson, we recognize six students who competed and earned honors on the national level for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, FCC LA. These students competed in event management and job interview events, learning that hard work and preparation is necessary to be successful at the national level. They were joined in California by Chef Susan Darti, who was the teacher facilitator for the students who participated in event management dealing with culinary and hospitality skills sets. Under the event management competition, students had to apply skills learned in culinary and hospitality courses to plan an event and prepare a proposal for a nonprofit organization. Vanessa Pix, Michaela Lawanga, and Kaya Harris competed in Level Three and received Silver. Antoine Mathis and Vamari Sap competed in Level Two and received Bronze. Under the job interview event, participants used career and technical education skills to develop a portfolio, participate in an interview, and communicate a personal understanding of job requirements. Amanda Machad competed in this event as a Level Two competitor and received Bronze. Joining them tonight is Chef Darti and Principal Mastromato again as she celebrates her student's success. These students are receiving a Superintendent Coin of Excellence for their accomplishments. Please join us in congratulating them.
Congratulations.
This concludes this evening's recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson-Canty. As always, one of the highlights of our board meeting is getting to celebrate our amazing staff. Once again, can we have a round of applause for our amazing athletic director, our awesome students? Somebody said they went to California to compete, is that correct? Wow, that, look at that. That's a prize all in itself. Well, congratulations once again, and thank you for all that you all are continuing to do. We'll now move on to the approval of the August 2, 2022 Agenda. The Duval County School Board approved the August 2, 2022 Agenda as submitted on July 26, 2022 with the following changes. Approval of Minutes, July 21, 2022, Special Board Meeting. Approval of the 2022-23 TRIM Advertisements, Item Added. July 21, 2022, Special Board Meeting, Item Added. July 26, 2022, Special Board Meeting, Approval of the 2022-23 Tentative Millage and Tentative Budget, Item Added. Academic Services, Continuation of the Inter-Agency Agreement with the Florida Department of Health, Duval County, Item Withdrawn. Human Resource Services, Staffing, Renewal and Consent to Assignment of the Power School Group, LLC, Contract Attachment Amended. Information Technology, Evolve Express Weapons Detection System, Item Withdrawn. Ask for a motion in a second.
So move.
Move by board member Anderson, second by by St. Peter Coker. Any discussion or comments? Hearing or seeing none, I'll call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this Agenda 7-0. Now I'll move on quickly to the chairman's report. I won't be before you long, but just long enough, I have a couple of slides. We are getting ready to not only start the school year, but also get ready to embark upon a vote for the referendum. We sat at this dais and voted to put a referendum on the ballot to increase and push and add value to our teachers through an increase in salary. So I just want to go through and make sure folks are reminded that we have amazing teachers, high-quality teachers, and we want to make sure we continue to do that and continue to raise, elevate the profession as much as we can. So once again, voters will decide on August 23. You see the ballot language here. Many folks have already started some of the voting, absentee ballots have already gone out. Early voting will start next week, and August 23 is the primary election. There's no chance to vote after August 23. This is not going into the general election. This is a one-time, one-shot sort of piece, so I want to remind folks of that, just to make sure that they are aware of the time and timing of how this will work. So we all know, we can all sit in this room and raise our hand about a teacher that's affected our lives, and we have a lot of teachers that are in classrooms right now who are doing that same thing, and some who want to be in the profession and some who have left, who are making decisions based on, some of that based on compensation. It is not the only reason, but it's one of the reasons and one of the levers people are making a decision about whether to stay or leave the profession. So we want to make sure we're doing something about that. So you've seen all the news, media, I'm sure Dr. Green is going to talk about this in her presentation. We have a number of vacancies, and this isn't a local, isolated, local issue. It's going on around the state, it's going on around our country, and we have to make sure that we are doing any and everything that we can to put a high-quality teacher in front of our kids. We talk about it all the time. Every single one of our kids, regardless of which school they go to, needs to have a high-quality teacher in that classroom, and this referendum helps us to pull one of those levers to make sure we increase those numbers. So we've had a number of vacancies. If you look back to 2017, 183 vacancies. If you fast-forward to about right now, in 2022, you're looking at 466. That is a number that we need to make sure that we're bringing down, and I know the district and the superintendent and the staff is doing every single thing they can, and I know Vicky Schultz is sitting right in front, doing everything they can to hire as many people as we get ready for the school year, but we need to do our part as a community as well and make sure we're supporting our teachers, and this is one way we can do just that. So I want to pause here and play a video. This is near and dear to me. This is a video, and I wanted to say this is a presentation, part of a presentation that we've actually been using as we're out in the community. I was at a CPAC last night, rotaries, downtown councils, other things, just to inform the public about why, why this is a need, why we're in the place we are. So I want to pause and show a quick snippet of a video from Principal Fluent, who happens to be a principal at First Coast High School, which is also in my area.
It's tough, knowing what somebody deserves and needs and not being able to provide that due to a lack of resources. It's difficult, and I don't think that we should be put in a position where choices like that need to be made. Knowing the countless hours the educators put in, it goes beyond the seven hours a day, kids are here. There's a whole other world of education that people just don't realize, and the lesson planning, the relationship building, the job doesn't stop at 2:00 when the students leave. When teachers come to being and they're provided an opportunity, the private sector pays them a considerable amount more, but requires less of their time, that's tough to do that. And so if I had a magic wand and could consult that issue, that would greatly help us in our retention of our better teachers.
Our schools.
Our community.
Our future. Learn more at duvalschools.org/vote.
So I just wanted to show that because that's one of over 100 principals who have very similar stories. You can talk to any of our principals and they'll have similar stories to that where their staff are coming to them with those decisions. And if you have seen any of the commercials that are out now, jobs are readily available, and our teachers don't even have to look for them. In fact, companies and corporations are seeking out our employees, they're seeking out our teachers because they're problem solvers, they're innovators, they're team players, they persevere, they can do all the things that you would want in a great employee. So we want to do all the things to show them that we understand how great and valuable they are. So Mr. Fluent said he wished he had a magic wand. We don't have that, but we do have a power of a vote, and we want to put that into practice and put that into implementation. So there's one other quick snippet video we want to show, and then I'll wrap my portion up, and then I'll turn it over to the superintendent for her report. So I want to show this quick video before I yield my time.
I'm thinking about the day I left or telling the kids that I was leaving. I just felt like my life was worth more, being able to spend time with my family and friends and not have to dedicate, you know, 7:00 a.m. or 8:00 before that, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. nights. You know the impact you're making because they told you. The kids are very honest. They know everything that I did at the school. They were very aware of how much I did. Them telling you that you're making a difference and how much, you know, they love you, they care about you, it's great. It's awesome, but it also doesn't pay my bills, and it, you know, makes me have to get a job or go somewhere that just isn't fair.
Our schools.
Our community.
Our future.
Learn more at duvalschools.org/vote.
So we just want to talk about the reality of that. That's one of our teachers who had to make that tough decision, and the impact she was making was profound, and we have teachers who are in that similar spot, and we want to make sure we can adjust. Want to give some sort of reference to how others are tackling this. We would be, if this happens to pass, if this passes, we'd be the 21st county in the state to actually pass a millage referendum. So this isn't, we wouldn't be the first out of the gate, but we definitely also don't want to be last. We want to make sure that we are focused in. We want to be one of those 21, if we get in there, who've actually passed a referendum that says we value our teachers, we value what they bring to this community, and they're a critical resource to what we need. So just wanted to show that as perspective. And last, the reason we're in this place is because we've seen declining millage over the last 10, 12 years, and what that means is that millage keeps getting rolled back and rolled back and rolled back, and if you see the number there, over $600 million we would have received if that millage had stayed where it was in 2010. So those monies could have gone to our teachers, our experienced teachers, our teachers on the ground, to make sure they were taken care of. And one of the things I do want to mention, we voted just last week on reducing that millage, and that comes from the state. So we're required, we basically get that information from the state, and it's our responsibility to say, yes, we have received it, we understand, and we then, we pass that. But what we have control over is locally, we can go out to the community and say, we want you to vote to see if we want to increase that millage. So that's where we are right now, and that one millage increase wouldn't even get us back up to that 5.3 that we would have been at in 2010. So this is a small cry, a small effort to push and make sure that our teachers have what they need. So I just wanted to show that slide for the community to understand, this is why we're where we are right now. In 2010, we were at 5.3 in a millage, and right now, just recently, just recently, it just got reduced again, we're at 3.2. So, last, the millage, when it rolls out, we hope will pull out about 80 million, $81 million. 75% of that would go to our traditional public schools and our teachers and staff in those traditional public schools, 12.5 to our, to arts and athletics, and then another 12.5% to the charters per state statute that we have. So I wanted to make sure people saw that pie chart about where that money was going. So specifically, I want to point out, teachers and staff, that is why we're having this millage conversation. That is where we want to put the bulk of those dollars. So it's time. Early voting is starting, August 23rd is that, that primary vote, vote. We have the power, we have the ability to do it. People have sacrificed a lot for us to be able to do this. In addition, our teachers. Our teachers are the most, one of the most valuable employees that we have in our city. They teach our future, they teach our current students as well. So I want to make sure I press upon everybody, get out and vote. Get out and vote. You can find more information on duvolschools.org/vote, find out more. You can see this presentation, a lot of the other videos, and just get some answers to the questions that you may have. But wanted to make sure before that, that voting happened, this is our last meeting before that vote will happen, wanted to make sure I just let folks know once again how critically important this is and why we made this decision as a board to push this forward. So thank you for your time, and I'll yield the rest, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Green for her presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Willie. As my presentation comes forward, there is something I do want to share with our parents. Now is the time, if you have not finished your enrollment for your school, if you are needing to enroll your children into school, please, please, please either go to our Parent Resource Center to, to start the enrollment process, or if you've started the enrollment process, check with your school that you are enrolling in to ensure all your paperwork is in place. Now is the time before the beginning of school where it becomes quite challenging. As Chairman Willie talked about the referendum, it's related a lot to our teacher vacancies. This report is updating where we are as of August 1st. So you saw the chart that showed February 2022, we had over 460 vacancies. Currently, today, we are at 453. You can't connect the two numbers because we were much higher than 453. We were close to 600 vacancies earlier in the summer, so a lot of work has gone into higher recruiting, making sure that our schools have access to applicants, and, and that HR pretty much is now working 24/7 to ensure that as we hire individuals, that we are able to onboard them so that they can start at the very beginning of the school year. As you can see, it says, "Out of every 100 teachers, there are seven vacancies." But vacancies are not in every single school. We created a chart, which now it's not moving, that kind of shows the percent of schools of no vacancies, one or two vacancies, and then plus three or more vacancies. 28% of our schools have no vacancies, so 28% of our schools, as of August 1st, so tomorrow, that could change, had no vacancies. 34% of our schools had one or two vacancies, but the highest number, 38%, which equates to about 63 schools, have more than three instructional vacancies. When you look at the vacancies, now, the analysis of the vacancies, we have 453 total teacher vacancies. Of that, 389 are directly impacting children because they are classroom vacancies. Instructional support, we have 64 vacancies. So instructional support could be a guidance counselor or media specialist, but the 389 vacancies are directly impacting children because those are classroom vacancies. So, we will continue to update the board. I knew, I know we do not have another board meeting before the beginning of school, but as usual, we will send out information at the end of the week if this, if these numbers change dramatically. But we are continuing to move forward. We will have district specialists, as well as district administrators, helping to support those, if we have vacancies, especially those schools that have double-digit vacancies. So three doesn't sound that bad, but we do have schools that have upwards to 10 or 11 vacancies, and those will be our schools that we will focus heavily on to ensure that we can support them. Most of our vacancies are in elementary and middle. Our high schools have the fewest vacancies. Actually, I think they're maybe less than 40. You know, they have less than 40 vacancies at all of, between all of our high schools. So again, most of our vacancies are at elementary and middle school. Another area that we continue to, one, even though we still have a bus driver shortage, it is absolutely better than where we were this time last year. Last year, our, some of our contractors had upwards to 100 bus driver shortages. That has at least narrowed down to maybe 50 or so, and they have drivers that we would say in the hopper, they're, you're still going through training, so hopefully by the beginning of the school year, that number will continue to dwindle. But for parents who are utilizing transportation, just so you know, it starts on August 3rd. Our call center opens up August 3rd and will operate until August 26th. We will continue, last year, we started a website, the Late Bus Arrivals, letting families know if you go to that website, you can see if your bus is running late, that we will continue that website this school year. In case you're looking for part-time employment, our contractors are hiring part-time drivers. I, I don't know what part-time driver means, that you only drive in the morning, or you only drive in the afternoon, or you only drive to be in that pool, so if someone is out sick for the day, they have a, a driver to take that person's place. We are also still excited that JTA will continue their, their pilot program for, transportation is free through JTA for secondary students, and that is either traditional or charter school, and that they will continue to have that free service for students, and this time, it is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In the beginning, we started with a timeframe, and it was only Monday through Friday, so now they've allowed it to be 24/7 and seven days a week. So that is an option for our secondary students. It is important for families to register for transportation. If you need to register for transportation, please go to our website. It's, the link is at the top at duvolschools.org/busregistration. Students who receive ESC transportation do not need to register. We handle that from the district, so if you're receiving ESC transportation, the district handles the registration. For all other students, parents, please remember, you must register your child through your Focus, the parent's Focus for Transportation, through your Focus account. Please do it as soon as possible. What we find is that the closer we get to school, it becomes a challenge to help families because everybody's calling the call center at the same time, and our goal is to try to help you as quickly as possible, so the earlier you get in to register, the quicker we can provide support if, if you need. You can find your child's bus info by logging into Focus, and transportation information will also be available. If you have the DCPS app on your phone, you can also find that information on the app. The last but not least, we will be offering a school safety parent academy. This will be our first school safety parent academy. It will be Tuesday, August 9th, at 6:30 PM at Atlantic Coast High School. You need to register for this event. We will have our own Chief Burton presenting. Also, the welcome will be given by our board member, Ms. Lori Hert...
Yes.
Well, I hope you know you're giving the welcome.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you are giving. But this will be an opportunity for parents and families to see some of the things that we are doing for training, for active assailant training. Sometimes parents are concerned about the videos that we're required to provide for, especially elementary children on training, so Chief Burton will be sharing an abundance of information, but if you want to attend, it's important that you register. The link is there, and it will also be on our website, so you don't have to memorize the link, just go to DCPS, the main banner, you can register through the link on our website. But this parent academy will be all about safety and security, and Chief Burton will also have school police, some of his officers there, for this interactive safety presentation. I think you will actually see one of our trainings, what students are asked to do, our, our commitment to ensuring that not only are we following the Marjorie Stoneman-Douglas legislation, but that we are continuing to enhance our safety and security strategies at all of our schools. So I hope, if you are interested, please attend. We do have plans to offer it around the district, so this will not be the last opportunity. As we get ready for school, we will continue to offer this through the parent academy. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Green. Some valuable information there. Once again, she mentioned the teacher vacancy piece. We want to support. I know myself and many other board members will be lending hands for beginning week of school, so I don't know if we can be substitute bus drivers, but we can definitely support and lend hands in our schools.
If you have a CDL license.
You never know. You never know. But I do want to make sure that, that, that is, is it going to be important that we do as much as we can, and once again, as far as the referendum, August 8th to 21st is early voting, and the 23rd is the actual vote, and the safety presentation too. We've done a lot, whether it be with the half penny or other dollars that we have, to really create safety and harden our schools and make sure they're as safe as possible. That is one of the number-one things that this board always talks about, is making sure our kids are safe when they've stepped foot in our schools, and I want to thank Chief Burton and the staff for, for lifting that up to make sure they're adding clarity to parents instead of thinking about sending their kids to school this upcoming school year, so thank you for that. So, we're going to move on to public comments, and we are now in the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. The board will allocate time for public comment based on the number of speakers who have filled out speaker cards prior to the designated time. If 1 to 20 speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted 3 minutes. If 21 to 40 speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted 2 minutes, and if 41 or more speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted 1 minute. Tonight, we have...
18.
18 speakers, so...
Actually, with three waving, but 18 speakers.
18 with three waving, so we'll be at 3 minutes for each of our speakers this evening. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have 1 minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. Board policy provides for an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the board. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20 PM. Thank you for taking time to address the board. I will turn it over to Vice Chair Coker, and we will begin our public comments portion.
Good evening. We'll begin with Melissa Bernhardt as our first speaker, followed by Michelle Tipton. The second speaker, Ms. Tipton, if you'll head up, just to be ready. We'll let you model it for everyone.
Okay, I'm not used to being the first. Melissa Bernhardt, and I'm here to speak to you tonight on the agenda, the board. On tonight's agenda, the board is supposed to vote on the approval of health education curriculum materials for 2022, 2023 school board year. Before you do so, please listen carefully as I read a statement from the ETR found on etr.org. "As an organization committed to advancing health equity, advocating on behalf of communities that experience marginalized and disappropriate inequities is a crucial part of our work. We take this moment to reiterate this commitment in light of the recent 'Don't Say Gay' bill, House bill in the state of Florida, and similarly proposal around the country which further harm LGBTQ youth and silence the trusted adults who provide them with safety and education and resources." So, we cannot support this organization who works to defy the law. ETR, HealthSmart, on your agenda is being offered to elementary, middle, and high school students. They obviously have an agenda of their own. They've already put it in writing that they are here to defy the Florida law, I'm assuming parental rights, parental Bill of Rights law. We cannot allow ourselves to contribute our tax dollars to this awful organization. My tax dollars should not go to it. My parents' tax dollars should not go to it. Furthermore, to advertise the false narrative of "Don't Say Gay" bill is repulsive, misleading, manipulative, destructive, and ignorant. Did they even read the bill? It does not say "Don't Say Gay." What it says is K through 3rd grade. I'll let you read the bill. So, on their website, "The more responsibility is to not support such repulsive vulgar content under the disguise as health education." Please visit their website. Their material is repulsive. It's disgusting. It's pornography. I can't believe we are even considering approving material from this organization. Nonprofits are not doing it for nothing. They're doing it for control and power and indoctrination. I don't know if I'm the person to go to to say, "I don't have a problem with LGBTQ, and I think there's got to be a happy medium somewhere," because I'm not against that organization, but I am against the sexualization of our children. I'm against the indoctrination. We all know that we're 48% below reading grade level for all of our students. That's where our focus needs to be, and, and to be able to say that it's health, it's not healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now have Michelle Tipton, followed by Kathleen Murray.
Good evening. Michelle Tipton. I am here tonight with some valid concerns in regards to the approval of the health education materials. The goal, as Melissa just mentioned, was to provide quality health education, and that is not happening. Even with Governor DeSantis' recent Parental Rights in Education bill, Duval County and organizations like HealthSmart and ETR continue to break the law. I'm here tonight because we need to address what some of these issues are. It's interesting because in speaking with people, a lot of times they'll say, "Well, it's not really happening in our schools," or you're, they're just saying that. I'm bringing to you tonight, and if I can have you share this with the school board...
Yes, our attorney will get it for you.
Okay, thank you. This is a flyer. I have a colorful copy here, pinks and reds, looks all fun. The title of it's "Get the Facts on Condoms." This was on the halls in Sandalwood High School, not in the nurses' station, not in privacy where a conversation can happen with a nurse. This is in the hallway where our young 14-year-olds are going to walk into the class, into the hallways in a couple of weeks. Let me go over a couple of these pros of condom use. Inexpensive and easy to get, typically no side effects for my 14-year-olds, can be fun, different styles, shapes, and textures to increase sensations. And the last but not least, condoms can delay ejaculation. These are in the hallways of our high schools. Cons for condom use. Some men complain of dull, this dulzer sensation, and requires consistent, proper use to be effective. Am I missing something here? Where is this age-appropriate for 14, 15, 16-year-olds? Where? You know, where is the topics of failure rates of condoms? Where is the topic rates of abstinence, you know? Shocker. Let's talk about... Let's talk about some of these things that should be happening. Privacy with a nurse, maybe. Most of the parents want to have these conversations with their children alone, with their own religious beliefs, their own virtues, and their own values. This should not be in the entrance way of Sandalwood High School. It's inappropriate. It's against the law. I see this as perverted, and I really think that people years ago would be going to jail for this. It's disgusting. But so is school board members attending abortion rallies and asking for votes, and that's happening also. There's a lot going on, and this needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Kathleen Murray, followed by Sherri Goddard.
Good evening. As a retired Navy veteran, I am often told, thank you for your service. But I want you all to know that I too thank you all for your service as well. This evening, however, I am not here as a Navy veteran, but as the Director for County Citizens Defending Freedom, CCDF, Duval County. In this role as a member of CCDF, as well as the mother of a rising senior here in Duval County, I am voicing opposition to the millage increase. Our country is experiencing inflation at the highest rate in 30 years. The increase in tax will hurt us all. When the superintendent's pay is increased from $275,000 to $300,000, and the board then submits a proposed millage increase, it is insensitive to the average citizen of Duval whose median income is only $57,377. To justify the millage increase by saying that other counties have had millage increases sends a message that the needs of Duval County are secondary to being, say, popular or in line with the other counties of the state. Second, I am speaking out in opposition to the adoption in tonight's agenda of the curriculum materials for health education in elementary, middle, and high schools that are from the nonprofit HealthSmart ETR. We at CCDF Duval understand that it may not be possible for the school board members to research all the curriculum for all the grades in Duval County. You men and women are extremely busy, and we are very sensitive to that. This is why I would like to offer the board the services of our volunteers in reviewing proposed curriculum, as they are doing in other counties around the state. A quick look at the website for HealthSmart ETR shows leadership that is opposed to the newly enacted Parental Rights in Education law. Specifically, a recent ETR blog posted on their website cites its opposition to the Florida law. As things they quote "can and must do in our classrooms," ETR is proud to offer a variety of LGBTQ+ inclusive resources, unquote. These resources include quote "free wellbeing resilience LGBTQ+ activism training module." And additionally, they cite as an example of their work the creation of quote "an LGBTQ+ inclusive curriculum." This is of concern to CCDF since we interpret this curriculum to be in potential violation of Florida's Parental Rights in Education bill. It would not be good use of our hard-earned tax dollars to potentially engage in a lawsuit defending these types of curriculum. Again, CCDF Duval is standing by with volunteers to assist the board in reviewing curriculum. I look forward to meeting with all the board members individually so that we can work together for the greater benefit of Duval County Public Schools and its students. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We'll now have Sherri Goddard, followed by Lori Crunden.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Goddard. My address is on file. I'm also a part of CCDF, and I'm happy to volunteer to read any kind of curriculum, anything you need, happy to help. I'm here to ask that you don't approve the new health education curriculum from the nonprofits, HealthSmart ETR, and Reducing the Risk ETR. If the audience has not had a chance to view these sites, let me share some highlights. The ETR site offers an LGBTQ pride condom kit, including one condom and one tube of lube, as well as printed instructions and a video on how to use a condom. This set comes in LGBTQ rainbow flag packaging and plainly states that it's for the LGBTQ audience. There is also a 16-session curriculum, which who knows what's in that, since I can only see what's in the curriculum if I paid $1,000. A blog on the site says, "We Say Gay Supporting LGBTQ+." It describes their pro-LGBTQ mission, along with free downloadable posters that can be hung in the classroom. Michelle has already showed you those. One of the posters displays the various contraceptives available, while another one asks, "What's your pronoun?" And then illustrates people and their labeled pronouns. On the ETR website, there is a list of who's using the curriculum, and Duval County is the second school on the list. This organization leaves no doubt as to its agenda to oppose Florida's parental rights and education law, and it leads me to wonder, why would the Duval County School Board blatantly break the law by approving this curriculum? When I was a child, our innocence was never compromised at school. We were there to learn academics, and CRT and LGBTQ curriculum were non-existent. Our kids today have these heavy topics constantly thrown at them, and it's too much. I grew up just fine, learning to love everyone regardless of their color or sexual preference. I'm not homophobic. In fact, some close friends of mine are gay. I believe kids can come to their own conclusion about such topics as I did without the help of schools. There are plenty of outside school resources if a student or parent needs help in these areas, freeing up precious time to be spent increasing math and reading skills. For example, the reading level of third graders is only 48% on grade level. There is a massive teacher shortage, and an abundance of parents are fleeing and finding alternative ways to teach their kids. I believe that problem could be fixed, not by increasing our taxes, which by the way, the tax increase will more than likely offset teachers' major increase in their pay. I believe by sticking to academics and cutting out these woke extracurricular topics will help with the massive teacher shortage and the abundance of teachers leaving, or students leaving.
Thank you. We'll now have Lori Crunden, followed by Robert Stafford.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lori Crunden. My address is on record, and tonight I'm here to speak about the proposed health curriculum that the council is voting on tonight. And I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, so hypothetically, why is it so important to cram this woke ideology down our children's throats? Why? I was recently having a conversation with my adult child, who is a transgender woman. I was describing the curriculum and agenda currently in the classroom. I explained how Governor DeSantis just signed the Parental Rights in Education bill. However, the school board voted six to one to defy that bill and keep pushing the narrative on our innocent children. She immediately responded with, and I quote, "I am so glad that I learned in an environment without all of these weird distractions. I had teachers that taught me how to read and write about history and science. I found my path on my own without influences from school." This is a child that attended Duval County Public Schools, K through 12. So I'm going to read an excerpt from The Hiding Place, The Triumph of True Story of Cory Ten Boom, and I read this at the meeting in May. This was a conversation that Cory had on the train with her father in the late 1890s, over 130 years ago. "At last, Father stood up, lifted his traveling case from the rack over our heads, and set it on the floor. Will you carry it off the train, Cory?" he said. "I stood up and tugged at it. It was crammed with the watches and spare parts he had purchased that morning." "Well, it's too heavy," I said. "Yes," he said, "and it would be a pretty poor father who would ask his little girl to carry such a load. It's the same way, Cory, with knowledge. Some knowledge is too heavy for children. When you are older and stronger, you can bear it. For now, you must trust me to carry it for you. We are asking our children to carry loads that are way too heavy for them. They should not be forced as children to see and feel the world through the lens of adults. Innocence is worth protecting and worth fighting, worth fighting for. We need to do our part as teachers, parents, caregivers, school board members, to carry certain things for them until they are old enough to carry the load. I ask you to please vote no on this curriculum you're voting on tonight."
Thank you. We'll now have Robert Stafford, followed by Doug Carney. I'm sorry, I believe that's Conkey. I apologize.
Good evening. My name is Robert Stafford, and my discussion is the continuing, excuse me, escalating cost of this construction of our breathless boats in elementary school. Pardon me. The original estimate was $24 million. And in the April 15th version of the website, Surtax website, there was a $5 million cost for demolition. So in the April 15th version, the cost was $30 million. In the June 29th version, those $5 million in demolition costs are backed out, and they're now $553,000, and an additional $11 million tacked on. Speaking around numbers, $12 million. Now, they estimate the cost as $40 million and rising. The other part is, on the facility's website, you still have draft documents. Your five-year plan, the last two pages still have draft text. So it's part of the draft, the entire of the fact's draft. It's just, and there are no more meeting minutes posted for Citizens Oversight Committee. They haven't posted any meeting minutes since November of last year. So there's just no transparency, no meeting minutes, there's no explanation of the increase in cost. You haven't given a basis estimate of anything coming down. I've had discussions with the board about change control. I don't know if you, how you go about adjudicating and resolving requests for waivers, waivers and deviations. I had a discussion with the board about configuration control. The answer that came back to me was, well, we're going to work with the core of items, going forward. It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way. Everything that's on page 12 of the plan should be configuration controlled. And if you don't have a configuration control, configuration management ideology or process, you need to establish one and go forward for all of the replacement schools. Otherwise, you're going to end up with as many configurations as you currently have. It self proliferates. That's all I got. Please give me a base investment. Show me, do you have a program management plan? Do you have a configuration management plan? Do you have a disposal plan? What do you have? And do I have access to that? Is the public given access to that? And please complete painting Rains High School. From the front entrance, the top level wasn't painted. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Doug Conkey, followed by Josh Nathanson. And I apologize if I got your name, if I was incorrect with your name.
That's fine. I have some pamphlets for folks, and you may have these electronically. I had sent them earlier in the day.
Thank you. Council will have us distribute them.
Chairman Willie, fellow school board members, Lieutenant Green, I'm excited to just be here and cheerlead the upcoming window, which is open August 1st and closes on the 15th. Our Blue School Grant Program from the St. Johns River Management District provides funding to teachers within the district in support of their efforts to engage students in the understanding and appreciating Florida's freshwater and estuarine systems. The mission of the Blue School Grant Program is for students to develop an appreciation for Florida's water, an understanding of water as a limited resource, and a water ethic that they can foster throughout their lifetime. I like to refer to it as you're planting the seed, and as the chairman made in his comments, the importance of teachers in our lives, you're planting the seeds, having some fun, doing some field work, and making the next generation of environmental science leaders that will protect our resources, and then they will train that next generation. So it's a wonderful program. It's for kids in sixth through 12th grade. Again, the window is August 1st through September 15th. $20,000 in grants for a teacher can get up to $2,000 per school, per teacher. So, and Duval actually, you'll see the numbers there, has done very well, sending some kids. Frank Peterson Academy has been one of the award winners in the past. January, the funds would be awarded if selected. It is a competitive process. And then obviously, the program is January to June, and there is a report as we document the wonderful things that you do. So I just wanted to hear to cheerlead this wonderful program that is now open for teachers. So I am talking to teachers and parents as well to hopefully get involved in the program. It's great. And as a side note, I want to thank Mr. Soares for his years of service. Go Navy.
If you could not refer to people individually, I apologize. I know you're trying to be nice, but it's board policy. I hate to do that.
That's fine. We're just?
You have to apply the rules.
Fellow alums, and I was just saying, go Navy. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, guys.
Because you do have a rich tradition here in Duval of preparing and sending kids to the service academies, and then they go on and serve this country. So thank you for your leadership and for the teachers doing a great job out there on a day-in, day-out basis. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
We'll now have Josh Nathanson, followed by Brian Merrill.
Good evening. My name is Josh Nathanson. I would like to inform the board and the superintendent that the information shared on the district website needs to be updated. During your recent workshop, when you discussed health education, the district informed the board that parents can see all health, all of the health lessons online, so they have a choose to opt out if they want. I checked out the district website and found out-of-date information. I would like to bring this example to your attention. First, the website states that fifth-grade puberty education lesson is called Always Changing Program, provided by Procter &amp; Gamble. A statement reads, "All materials are available for preview, including the lesson guide and videos that are shown to boys and girls." However, when a parent clicks on the link provided, the URL no longer works. In addition to this curiosity, I have an email that Franny Kendall sent to a group of elementary teachers last May, which states, "We no longer, we are no longer using the Always Changing Program and have shifted to HealthSmart lessons." She actually says that these new lessons have been part of science lessons for several years. Then, as it relates to HealthSmart, there is a lesson for fifth graders called Gender Identity Expression. I've heard board members and district personnel repeatedly state that the teachers only teach to the state standards. However, we have read all of the core standards to your website links to for fifth-grade health, and there is no standard whatsoever that includes the word gender. The hope of many parents is that we could trust the information that gets communicated to us. We even have information that some staff members are confused about some of these lessons. Yes, parents have the right to opt out. We just request that we have accurate information so that we can make an educated decision. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now have Brian Merrill, followed by Karen Berry. And after Karen Berry is Mr. M. Brinkley.
Good evening. Brian Morrell, with an O, M-O. It's kind of weird, but I feel like I'm in Babylon. I'm going to assume you have actually researched the material which you are voting on tonight, and following all these comments this evening, ignorance is not an option when you vote. I am against the health education curriculum as it simply is a way for you to circumvent the Florida statute protecting parental rights in education. Regardless of what you call it, or how you try to push it, your continued radicalization and sexual grooming of our kids is disgusting and criminal. The laws of nature and nature's God are pretty clear in this matter, and so is the law. If you truly care about our kids, you will vote no. I'm against the millage tax. Perhaps you can try using some of the money you were going to put in this other garbage toward paying teachers more. Some of you are in the midst of reelection campaigns, and we, the people, see the lies you are spouting about your supposed nonpartisan approach. We, the people, are awake. We are awake to the questionable and even criminal behavior some of you have engaged in. We see the nonprofit organization fronts you operate with the help of police forces. We, the people, are the boss of you. You work for us, the taxpayers. We, the people, will no longer tolerate questionable or even criminal behavior by our elected officials. Serve your constituents well by providing a quality education in reading, science, writing, math, in keeping with the laws of nature and nature's God. If you don't actually serve your constituents, including the youngest of us, it means you are doing us harm, and you will be held accountable. May God bless you, United States of America. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now have Karen Berry. I am not seeing Karen Berry, Karen Berry, and there was not a topic on that card. Mr. M. Brinkley. Are you, are you M. Brinkley? Okay, hold on. I have to call him in order. I apologize.
I, I, my dad was supposed to speak, but it was about like a student issue. So we felt that it was probably a bit of a.
I actually have to do it by the person on the card. I'm so sorry because we love. Will you stand up with your father, please? Because we love to hear student voice, but in this case, we have to follow.
It's just wanting to be agreed, that's why.
Okay. If she wants to stay right with you. I'm in a tricky spot here and I want to be helpful, but okay. Thank you for working with us.
Good evening, board members. My name is Michael Brinkley. And my child has been enrolled in Duval County for three years. Has experienced more problems in those three years than she has in her entire year of schooling. She's attended Paxton School for Advanced Studies. I will start with one of her simpler issues as she experienced. She has had bus problems since day one. She has been left at the school at least seven times with no bus coming. And the latest that she has arrived home was after eight o'clock. This has happened several times. With no school administrator present, she was unable to get in the school. She was unable to notify any personnel at the school. Once the kids left for the day at three o'clock or whatever their dismissal, the kids were not allowed back in the, in the school, including my daughter. She made it to her bus stop. She has to walk a mile and a half to a mile point eight every day in an unsafe neighborhood where she has been followed twice by men. I've reached out countless times with no administration will assist me in helping her find a safer option to walk home. The bus that she rides goes past my house in the afternoon. They will not open the door and let her out and they tell me it's because of policy. The only thing I'm told that this policy prevents the school from adding a stop in which when the school, at the beginning of the school year, I was asked to write in a stop if I felt that my child was going through unsafe measures, which I did several times. The second issue is that she was with a DCPS employee who made racist and inappropriate sexual remarks toward her and a group of her friends. The teacher at Paxton, I'm not going to state her name, said that it was okay for her to use the racist word specifically, the N-word, and justified it by claiming that she could be black. The use of race remarks like the N-word had no place in the education setting. In addition, this, she made remarks about my daughter's sexuality in response to a friend laying her head on my child's shoulder, telling them to save it for the bedroom. Nothing was done to reprimand this teacher. My daughter voiced the questions of why she had been talked by the teacher and made her openly known that she had no respect for black students in multiple times. With no answer, my child recorded this incident and was written up because of policy. Policy states that students cannot record teachers for their protection. If my child had not voiced concerns or had not recorded this incident, it would, it would be without proof. It would have been my, it would have been the word of the teacher against my child and the school system. She was the proof and she issued, give me a second. She would have been the results that she had to prove. My child recorded her for safety. She recorded her for safety measures.
Thank you.
Then she was.
Sir, I'm sorry. You're at the three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But if you'd like, if you'd like to, if you'd like to email the board, you are welcome to contact the board.
I have 30,000 emails to send to the school board.
Thank you.
In reference to this.
Thank you. Thank you. Joey, Joey, no audible applause, please. We've had good civil discourse. We appreciate that. Joey Marmo, followed by David Hadones. And I'm, I thought I got that right. Joey Marmo, followed by David Hadones.
Joey Marmo, my address is on file. I want to urge you to vote no to the health education curriculum. I checked out some of the websites associated with the education. It's repulsive and unacceptable. I didn't realize there were proprietary condoms for LGBTQ plus minus, what have you. I grew up in the old days where I just had a condom, but anyway. No, no to the millage tax. You have a $2 billion mismanaged budget. You're already getting a tax increase. It's called property value appreciation. I don't know, we all live in Florida. We know we've had skyrocketing property values. There will be plenty of money with the, without any new taxes based on property valuations that are going to come in through just normal taxation of higher priced homes. I was wondering, are teachers leaving because of the pay? This is rhetorical. Or are they leaving because of the sexualization agenda? Is there a correlation? Just wondering. Our kids need to learn reading, writing, and arithmetic. That's old school, you know, the way I was raised. Keep politics out of it. We just got over the mask debacle, which of course was about political science. All of this is political and we, the people, are aware. We see it for what it is. An attempt of political indoctrination. Its roots are in Marxism, a status godless ideology. We reject this and we implore you to do the right thing and reject this woke trash. And of course, you know, we, the people, like my good friend Brian stated, are the ultimate bosses of you guys. So we implore you to do the right thing. Or you'll, you'll be voted out. And one more thing, I saw that video there of kids in masks and double face shields and all this. I just want to make you aware that face shields, masks look ridiculous. They're ineffective. They're abusive. They have zero impact and they damage children. That video really insulted me, you know? I was the abused kid in the first grade. I'm here talking for that abused kid right now, 51 years later. This is abuse. You're abusing children. And I'm defending that little boy right now. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now have, and I'm going to go with David Hodges, but please correct me if I am incorrect. I've re- relooked at the handwriting.
You have it right.
Thank you.
And I listened, but I was supposed to do this individually, right? So I'll listen. I wanted you to know I do listen.
Thank you. And you'll be followed by Natalie Dreyer as FYI. Please begin.
I'm sorry. I provided each of you a packet. You should have it in front of you. I started off with pictures because sometimes pictures get you interested. The first picture is a picture and the second picture relates to it of a certification inside of a relocatable. That this one shows that it was at Robert E. Lee High School. At the time, it was now Riverside. Actually, this relocatable is at Westside High School. And, and it shows the certification date of when it was inspected was 2007. Okay? So when it was moved from Robert E. Lee High School to what was then Nathan Bedford Forest High School, it was never reinspected for how it was installed and put together. So I just thought that might grab your attention. The others there are several other schools, Westside, on the west side that happened to be near where I was looking for schools. The last two are one on Staples Mill. I think that's called Chimney Lakes Elementary. And you'll notice that it has a check mark in the separation of units as it being checked off that they are separated. And there's a reason for units, the relocatables should be separated as if there's a plumbing problem or a fire or whatever outbreak, so that they're, that one doesn't affect the others. These all happen to be side by side at, at, at Early Learning Academy. And you'll also notice from the next to the last picture and the, and the last picture that they were both done at 12 a.m. on the same day. And there's a bunch of, so what that tells me is that they're just writing them off. But then the very next section, if you flip over to the part that shows the Duval County School Board District, it's the first page of the audit that was done in 2017. And then I paste it in or included for you, the section that shows that the relocatables are not being inspected properly in Duval County. And this has been going on since 2012. Well, I got news for you. It's been going on since 2010 and it's been, and it's still going on today. And there is a state statute that requires that they be inspected annually and that the inspection report be posted. And this is a copy, the first page is a copy of the inspection report that's to be put in the classroom showing that it's been inspected. It's not being done. Okay. So now we want to go to about page seven or eight. It's the one, first picture, first page after the pictures. And the first thing down there is where it's in large print, the most basic of the problem is that there is no person employed by the school board who is properly licensed to perform mechanical, electrical, or plumbing inspections of these units. And as a side note of any other construction going on in Duval County. And they said? Shocked. What I'm telling you is there's nobody licensed to do the work.
Thank you.
And that's more than three minutes worth, but.
Thank you. We'll now have Natalie Dreyer, followed by Dana Mall.
Are you good?
I think so. Is it working?
Pull it up just a touch.
Better?
Perfect.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Natalie Dreyer. I'm the mom to two amazing middle school students. People are horrified to learn that you have a peer-to-peer anonymous teen sex chat line in Duval County Public Schools. I remember I was shocked when I first saw it too. I think a fair amount of you were shocked when I brought public comment about your partnership with Birds and Bees, funded through the CDC dash grant. I remind you again of your promotional materials with them. Hooking up? Text Talk DCPS. Doing it? Text Talk DCPS. Sex? Text Talk DCPS. Getting laid? Text Talk DCPS to 66764. Get some? Text Talk DCPS. Get lucky? Text Talk DCPS. Another social media post reads, stuck at home? Here's your checklist. TikTok your friends and then text Talk DCPS to take charge of your sexual health. Nice. Thanks, Birds and Bees. Now you want our middle schoolers on TikTok along with getting some of your teen sex chat line? Is it educational or is it promotional? I know your upcoming health curriculum being voted on tonight is built with an umbrella of sex positivity for your content. This is now my fourth time speaking about Birds and Bees. After my first time speaking, your Director of Health Education fired off a series of emails with the Birds and Bees team, warning them to look out for parents posing as children. No worries, said the vendor. They were well aware of the spike in activity and they knew it was parents. This is all in a records request. What is wrong with your administration? Telling a confidential anonymous teen sex chat line to look out for parents? There are children. Of course, while a public facing material was swiftly scrubbed from the site, the Birds and Bees contract was renewed two months later. Thousands of dollars to the teen sex chat line, but teachers, nah, they can buy their own expo markers. You will soon be faced with another decision to reply for another round of CDC funding. Please say no. Do not listen to the nonprofits who profit monthly from being on your consent agendas. One such nonprofit called it a game changer because now they could be in the schools directly. Kids need common sense values, not after school sexuality training. I remind you again of the Middle School Closet Club that Duval Moms for Liberty discovered. No adult should be alone in a club that advertises what is here stays here. And again, this has been verified in a records request. It is happening. In April, Governor DeSantis ordered that Florida will no longer participate in the data mining of children through the YRBS survey system. His order withdrew Florida effective immediately. But in your July 19th workshop, your Director of Health Services mentioned that the team is reviewing some workarounds to still gather the YRBS data. So once again, Duval Schools has no problem figuring out how to skirt the law. And this is what our Westside board member keeps fighting for, a return to common sense. She sits here and votes over and over, six to one, because she knows she is serving children and teachers, not funding systems.
Thank you. Dana Mall, followed by Tim Zindel.
Good evening. My name is Dana Mall. I just want to thank the board for your advocacy in improving the teacher pay. I have two sons who are in Duval County Public Schools. One is going to the first grade and the other one is going to the eighth grade. I also have several friends who teach in DCPS. All of my kids' teachers have become extended family members. I do plan on voting yes for the additional millage. And when I do that, I'm thinking of my friend who teaches seventh grade science at Highlands Middle School and another friend who's a kindergarten teacher at Biscayne Elementary. Thank you for sharing that information tonight. I appreciate the transparency.
Thank you. We'll now have Tim Zindel, followed by Daisy Yarborough.
Good evening. This is Tim Zindel. This is my first board meeting ever in my entire life and here I am making comments, pretty exciting stuff. My, my comments tonight regarding the budget referendum. You know, I'm getting a little older, getting closer to being on a fixed income and I'm less inclined to just automatically, you know, vote yes on the proposals. Again, very admirable. I sympathize. I just came out of the great resignation in the corporate world. Lots of vacancies, lots of folks leaving, you know, to take other jobs. And a lot of it is money. But my concern would be that what are we doing about the non-financial type things? Have you surveyed the teachers? Have you done exit interviews to try to really profile and understand why people are leaving? I mean, to me, you know, I've, I come from a company with 60,000 employees and over 100 companies. Very difficult to talk to each everyone individually. And so it's important that we survey the workforce on a regular basis and we collect all that information and use that to kind of help make our management decisions. As part of a leadership team, I'm also responsible for looking out for my folks. We typically have one to 3% merit, you know, merit pay raises on a regular basis. My own personal experience over 10 years, I've made a significant increase by being in, you know, in the same position. I wanted to stay because I like what I do. I've also taken a pay cut, you know, from the pandemic in order to keep my job. A lot of my colleagues and a lot of my friends have taken as much as 50% pay cuts. So it's not always about the money. It's what are the other factors? If we give you $80 million if the voters should approve the referendum, what are you going to do with that money and guarantee that it's not just all about, it's not just about the money? There are a lot of non-financial factors that go into making these decisions, whether people stay or whether they leave. And I hope you really give that some serious thought. I did take a few minutes to try to look at the numbers so I wasn't, you know, completely ignorant. I looked at, you know, your, your website showing total number of employees, total salary budget and things like that. And I was able to come up with a little bit of a trend where I did see things going, you know, up. Salaries increasing over time, salaries decreasing over time as employee numbers, you know, went up and down. But again, I can't finish the analysis because you don't have all the same information for the last five, five or six years. But again, your budgets have been $1.7 billion and up consistently for the last eight or nine years. There's a lot of money there and there's a lot of room for improvement. I'm hoping that you guys are really taking some serious time to think about what you're doing and the decisions you're making as you come and ask us for another 80-plus million dollars. It's going to get harder and harder, especially in the light of all the other factors going on around us. Thanks for your time. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now have Daisy.
Wouldn't want to be in your shoes right now.
We don't, thank you. We'll now have Daisy Yarborough, followed by Harriet Vasquez. You got it?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Daisy Yarborough and I go to Louisville School of the Arts. Let's talk about badges. LGBTQ badges to be specific. At my school, many teachers wear LGBTQ badges that say all in, when in fact, we are not all in on this agenda. These badges are only for kids who want to be a part of the LGBTQ community. The badges are not for heterossexuals or kids of different races, religions, or cultures, but only for the LGBTQ community. This not only excludes other religions, cultures, and communities, but violates Policy 6.85, Political Activities for Employees, Paragraph 2. It states, "No employee shall use his and/or her position in any way to influence or attempt to influence students to support or oppose any candidate, party, or issue." By teachers wearing these all-in badges, it shows children that their teacher supports the LGBTQ, LGBTQ agenda, which has the potential to influence children to believe that he or she can be whatever gender they want to be. This violates the Influence or Attempt to Influence part of Policy 6.85. Policies are the laws of the schools. You are breaking them. If you are really wanting a badge of some sort, then you need to have a non-biased badge. For example, a neutral colored badge that supports everyone. I'd also like to bring up the fact that some teachers wear the all-in LGBTQ badges over their own ID. This is a security issue and needs to be stopped. Can kids wear other badges over their own ID? When I go to school this month, I don't want to see the LGBTQ all-in badges on employees. They are against the laws of the school. Do not make the mistake of thinking that the. Do not make the mistake of thinking that the community of LGBTQ are the only ones who are bullied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now have Harriet Vasquez.
Hi, my name is Harriet. I heard you today say that we all need to do our part, but are you doing yours? Your job is education. Forty-seven percent. Do you understand what that means statistically? Fifty percent would imply that there's a random chance of learning how to read, but DCPS students have a 47% chance. That implies that you all are actually causing the students. You're doing harm to the students. They are doing worse off than a 50/50 random chance. And worse yet, you tell us that you're going to take them out for protesting, and you, you claim you cite the law, the Tinker case versus Des Moines, as your rationale. But what you missed in Tinker versus Des Moines is that you actually have a legal responsibility to not show these children things that are inappropriate. There's a part of the law you missed. And then you went ahead and you, you cited the law as if it gives you the grounds under the First Amendment rights. Did you do a little more research? Did you look into the Hazelwood versus Coolmeyer case? Did you read it? You want to know what it says? Although teachers and students do not lose their First Amendment rights at the schoolhouse gate, although they do not lose those rights, they are not coextensive with the rights of adults in other settings and therefore must be looked at and implied in light of the fact of the schoolhouse agenda. Do you know what that agenda is? Education, the thing you're failing at. Do you understand that? Forty-seven percent? I minored in math. Thankfully, I didn't go to DCPS because I'm not sure I'd have that opportunity. Forty-seven percent. Again, I'm going to remind you. That implies that you're doing worse than random chance. So what are you doing? Well, I hear that you're pushing a lot of sex education. What business do you have telling children to text them about, you want to get laid? What? If I was in a workplace and somebody approached me with that, that would be highly inappropriate. That is absolutely inappropriate for you all as well. That's a sexual harassment case. Does that not make sense to you guys? Where's the rationale? Where's the logic? It's funny. I get it. I understand. I've seen you guys laugh when people are telling you these things. But it's not, you're not going to stay up here and do this. You're breaking the law. And you guys will pay the penalty of the law for breaking it. Thank you.
Thank you. We had three people who waved in speaking tonight. Jeff Arneson waved in opposition new, to the new health education curriculum and no to millage tax. Kathleen Murray waved opposing to approve the health education curriculum materials from HealthSmart ETR. And Ed Williams, also opposition to the health education curriculum materials. And that concludes our speakers and those who waved.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We will now move on. Two comments from parent organizations. I don't think I see too many or any at all. Oh, I do see. Okay. No comments from district student government. Moving on to comments from employee organizations.
Good afternoon. I'm Frank Delong, Chairman of IBW 177. Not going to harp on you tonight about people leaving, even though we got more people leaving. I am here about a different set of issues that's going on. First of all, December 2021, this coming year, we had an incident occur in the school board involving an upper administrator. During that incident, we ended up filing a sexual discrimination complaint against this individual. We're now eight months into it. Back in May, they contacted our person and told them that they couldn't find the file. It was misplaced and asked for more information. The person it was done to, when it first happened, applied for and was accepted for a different job in a different part of the school. So every month, we send a notice downtown to find out where we're at. So in June, we sent one. They made contact with her and said, you got a promotion and a pay increase. We thought it was done at that. Now, I don't know if that's arrogance, incompetence, or ignorance. Doesn't pass the smell test by a long shot. We're not going anywhere. We want resolution in this matter. Then I turn around and then this week, actually last week, had an employee come up and said they filed a sec, and I'll be nice. I'm trying my best to be nice. They said they filed a sexual harassment complaint after they were, and I'm being nice, sexual harassment, which we all train for. Every year, they take training. The person filed the complaint with their supervisors. Their supervisors then said they'll take care of it. A week later, the employee asked what happened. Then they said, we handled it internally. It never made it downtown. Those people should be demoted, suspended, something. It never made it down here. Now, if y'all want to talk to me about what occurred, we're glad to talk to you. I'm trying to be nice. All this training that these guys go through every year? If they had to take it, apparently the supervisors don't even pay attention to it. We're getting tired of it. And y'all have the power to do something about it. Okay? The last one I talked about apparently occurred six months ago. The employee is afraid to death if they say anything to anybody that there's going to be retribution. There's been alleged retribution with these two supervisors in the past. It better not, anything happen to this employee. I guarantee you that. Okay? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Delong. Any other parent organizations or employee organizations that I may have missed out there? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to approval of minutes. That the Duval County School Board approved the minutes from the meeting listed in the agenda item. July 11, 2022, regular board meeting. July 19, 2022, Agenda Committee meeting. July 19, 2022, Board Workshop. July 21, 2022, Special Board Meeting. Approval of 2022, 2023 TRIM advertisements. July 21, 2022, Special Board Meeting. July 26, 2022, Special Board Meeting. Approval of 2022, 2023, Tentative Millage and Tentative Budget. Ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none. We'll go ahead and call for your vote. By your action, you have approved the Agenda 7 to 0. Now moving on to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items to do, are there any items to place on the consent agenda or items for discussion? Yes, Board Member Joyce.
Yes, I want to pull the Health Education Instructional Materials Review for Discussion.
Okay. Board Member Joyce has pulled item number three. Health Instruction Instructional Materials Review for Discussion. So that will now be on discussion. Any, um, let's ask, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second on the consent agenda as, as now amended with the Health Education Instructional Materials Review for, on for discussion.
So moved.
So.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. Call for your vote. By your action, you have approved the Consent Agenda 7 to 0. Now, do, we don't have any, I don't see any items to consent with comment, so we'll move on to discussion agenda, and we'll actually start with item number three. Health Education Instructional Materials Review. Board Member Joyce, you pulled this item.
I did. I want to, first of all, thank the public for coming and speaking out against the health curriculum. I appreciate your advocacy. We have struggled so long and for, forever, for parents to be involved in their children's education. And the fact that we have a core group that's coming before the board now that's doing their research, I really appreciate that. So I do have some issues with some of the curriculum. In the fifth grade curriculum, I did actually look and the, the, there is an gender identity lesson in that curriculum. So just for the board to know that there is a lesson in fifth grade with gender identity. But when I pull, I asked specifically for the materials for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I do, there are things in here that are very troubling to me as a parent. And so I, I'm, I'm going to vote against the approval of this, these materials, but I'm going to tell you why to start with. When I'm looking at the sixth grade lesson, the first activity, it says, explain that you will be teaching five lessons that will help them learn how to protect themselves against, from pregnancy, HIV, and other diseases you can get from sex. That's in sixth grade. And I, I just went through this real fast as we were having public comment. You have a story, an activity in seventh grade about STDs, and there's a story about a girl named Shannon. And one of the question what is, one of the questions is, how many people did Shannon have sex with? I just think there are parents that are not aware that this is happening in their sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes, classrooms, and it could be a problem. And I don't think that we are being overly transparent about this. In the eighth grade lesson, there is a lesson in Activity 6.4, condom demonstration. And the materials, latex condoms, Vaseline, lubricant, female condoms. And then in the, and like I said, I'm going through this real fast. I haven't pored through all of it. But another lesson in 7.3, HIV risk behavior. It says risky sex with latex condom and baby oil. Mouth to genitals with latex barrier. Penis and vagina with latex condom. Mouth, genitals. These things right here are just disturbing to me. At the very least, I think it would be good for the board to table this item and discuss it more thoroughly and bring it back for a vote at a later date. But if the board's will is to move forward with this material, I'm going to have to vote against that.
Thank you, Board Member Joyce. Other comments? Board Member Hershey.
Through the, through the chair to, to Dr. Green. You know, we had conversations during the workshop or the agenda review on this topic. What I want to, want to be understanding clearly is, how did we come about these materials? I mean, were these materials on a list of approved materials by the state? Because that's concerning to me, too. I mean, because it's, it's one thing if the board or the district goes out and seeks and says, this is what we're going to do. But there's a greater issue at hand, in my opinion, if it's coming down from the state of saying it's okay. So that's, that's a clarification that I would like.
Through the chair, I'm going to ask Heather Albritton, who's the Director of Health Education. She will come forward and.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Green. Through the chair to Board, this is not tall enough for me, to Board Member Hershey. As discussed in our board workshop, we have two separate materials that are available for our students, our teachers to use for our students specific to this education. We have our state-adopted textbooks, and then we have supplemental materials that were approved through the School Health Advisory Council, provided by the CDC and other ancillary partners, as provided to us from those entities. The School Health Advisory Council reviewed all of those and selected these materials back in 2012. So we've been using the same materials for Draw the Line, Respect the Line, Reducing the Risk, and ETR things in our health education classes since 2012.
And just for clarification, through the chair, these are supplemental and not from the textbook that list that we get from the state?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, the specific materials that Board Member Joyce just showed, the Draw the Line, Respect the Line, and Reducing the Risk from ETR, those are supplemental materials. The Teen Health textbook and the Hope textbook, those are directly from the state board adoption.
But what we're voting on tonight, are these supplemental?
No, it's everything as a whole. Just one second.
Okay.
Board Member Pearson.
I have a few questions. And I have actually read through all three, the sixth, seventh, and eighth, and had questions. And I've had this conversation. I'm going to ask some of these questions again. On, in the ETR HealthSmart, do we teach, because I, I understood from our workshop that we, I don't remember the exact language, but we lead with an, it's an abstinence-first curriculum, and then we have the supplemental. Do we teach every lesson in the ETR book? And how, if, if our health admin is picking certain lessons, how do we know that teachers aren't using lessons that aren't selected by admin in the book? That's my first question. My second question is, do we have another alternative for the added material, the supplemental material? And three, I, I'm not sure that I followed everything the speakers were saying, but it sounded like in their research on the website, that there is an LGBTQ package that goes along with this ETR, but maybe I misunderstood. Because I didn't, when I was reading the materials, I didn't see what the person was talking about in the book that I read. So is there like an add-on package specifically for LGBT? And are we purchasing, if so, are we purchasing that? I can go back in order.
I was going to say, I'm going to try to remember them, so.
Okay, first one is, do we teach every lesson in the book? And how do we, if, if we are picking and choosing, how do we make sure that teachers are only teaching what you're choosing or what someone's choosing?
Through the chair to Board Member Pearson, so specific to K5, 6, 8, or 9, 12?
Let's go with 6, 8.
6, 8. The lessons that are provided with the Draw the Line, Respect the Line book and the Reducing the Risk, those are expected to be taught in entirety. And every lesson in those books is tied to state standard and approved through those six through eight books. So the, the preface of the sixth grade, like you're going to be learning about this, that is literally an introductory statement. There are no lessons in the sixth grade curriculum that pertain to sexual activity. It's learning your barriers, you know, if you've read the materials, then you would under, like, it's just not there. Sexual contact is not. Nine through 12, same thing. Every lesson is supposed to be taught. That's the intent of the program. All lessons taught with fidelity, which is what ensures that they learn the proper behaviors or learn at least how to say no, how to protect themselves if they choose to have those behaviors. So six through eight, the intent is for every lesson to be taught, and you have access to every single one. I'll back up to K through five. K through five, there are only, I think we've knocked it down to 20 lessons. So the only lessons that the teachers have access to are those 20 lessons that are loaded, and those are the ones that are in here in the scope and sequence document that's loaded on the website for parental review.
Okay. Do we have another alternative for supplemental?
At this time, no, we do not. I mean, when we move forward with the potential renewal of the CDC grant, everything is up for review and renewal at that time.
Okay. And then, did DCPS purchase the LGBTQ package if, if one exists? That's the way I was interpreting the comments.
Through the chair to Board Member Pearson, no, we do not. ETR is a publishing company, so they have many programs, as explained in the board workshop. The only ones we purchase or are affiliated with are the ones that were provided. The only ones we purchase or are affiliated with are the ones that were provided to you in that board workshop and listed.
And I do have a fourth question, sorry. If we were to vote against this item tonight, can we satisfy state curriculum standards without the supplement?
Without the supplement, I would, I would say the textbooks give a general introduction. It would be very, it would be hard to do so. So I, I can't say yes or no. We'd have to look, we'd have to review a, a few more things within those textbooks a lot deeper to be able to meet the statutes, in my opinion.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson. Board Member Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to Ms. Albritton, thank you for your work. I know it's been challenging, especially this year of all years. The opt-out provision, uh, is that forward-facing on the website and parents are given that opportunity to opt out?
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, absolutely. So we've done a better job in providing that information to parents. We've worked with Communications and trying to get that out in several different avenues. So in addition to the teachers providing those notes that we know sometimes don't always make at home to their parents, we've made it readily available on the website, which, that's where it's always been. But now we're also trying to do a push-through focus, so the parents know their options. And if they don't want their child in this specific lesson or these lessons, they can absolutely request that their student be moved.
And the process of selecting the supplemental information, how, can you explain that process?
Sure. So through the chair to Board Member Jones, prior to my arrival here, um, I believe the grant writing process started in 2011 or 2012. So, uh, we already had regular state-adopted textbooks that we use, but it was noted by our data and some internal investigations that we needed additional materials to satisfy the needs of our students. And so that's where the, the creation of the grant process and how we created the application and then received the award for. In that process comes a review of materials that could be used for education. So the, and I'm, Dr. Krisner, you may help me if you remember who all was on that committee before, but I know the School Health Advisory Council was very active in the participation of selecting those materials. And that's the School Health Advisory Council or SHAC. So that includes parental, um, input, community input, stakeholders with DCPS on our end, local health officials, I mean, a variety of stakeholders within this particular area for health education that provided their input. And I'm not sure how robust the list of materials that they had to select from was, but this was the unanimous decision in which they landed on.
Okay. And, and given the fact that, uh, we, we know in certain health zones that we have a increasing pregnancy rate, uh, and you, what we teach is, you have to reach all those students, whether they're in a two-parent household or a single-parent household, that may not be as well informed or able to provide information. So, uh, it is a difficult challenge, and I, and I, and I think the committee has done a, a pretty good job of landing in a place where they are trying to make sure that all students, uh, provided the information. And if parents, uh, object to, uh, some of the language or some of the curriculum, then they have the option to opt out. So, uh...
Let me do this, let me properly, thank you, Board Member Jones. Let me properly put this on the floor to make sure we're in the proper posture to, to make sure we can actually have this discussion and add any amendments. So it's the recommendation, um, that the School Board of Beval County, Florida approve the health education curriculum materials for the use of 22, 23 school year as presented. That is, that is where we are. I need a motion in a second so we can actually move into official discussion.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Chair Coker, second by Board Member Jones. Now we're in discussion. Once again, we, again, we're just continuing discussion, and I saw some hands this way. Board Member Joyce?
Yeah, so I just want to, um, respond to Board Member Jones. When I was looking, um, through the website for reviewing the materials, because, you know, we were told in our board meeting that all materials could be reviewed through the website. And so when I went onto the website, um, there are standards that are listed. The lessons are not listed. And so whenever I picked up the actual lesson, and this is what is disturbing to me, it's not the standard. I just don't, I don't know or think that all districts in the county are this graphic with their lessons in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as far as sexual orientation. And again, when you're talking to students in middle school about mouth to genitals, penis to vagina, um, penis in rectum, these are some things that are really heavy that I do not think, as a board member, I didn't know this. So I would say that it's not, we are not being very transparent about it. Listing standards on a website and then actually seeing the curriculum is two different things. And I think that there are, there could be other curriculums that we could use that would not be this graphic. And I don't think there are many parents that would accept this for their children. And the opt-out, I know there's an opt-out piece, but the problem is, we, we don't get that, parents generally don't get that information to, to opt out. It should be, I would say, an opt-in. So let the parent opt their student into this, but not just blanket if you don't want your student to participate. Because I do think this is some heavy, heavy information for middle school and elementary school children.
Can we get some clarity on, on that? So the website curriculum that's on there, you held up a packet and document that was there. And I know, so prior to sort of some recent happenings, it wasn't required necessarily. So we were actually ahead of the game in giving transparency, and now we're actually doing even more. So can you speak to that really quickly to sort of get that?
I don't know if I'm going directly to you or through you to Board Member Joyce, to everyone. So, um, last year was the first year that we were required to actually, um, provide access to our lessons on the website. So when that law passed, that's when all of the materials had to be available online. Prior to that, as discussed in board workshop, all of the materials have been available either through our office or at your child's school for a view at any point in time. So at any point in time that you wanted to review these materials, you were freely able to go to your child's school to sit down either with the principal or with the health education teacher and peruse through them at your leisure. Now we have access to them online. So, um, Board Member Joyce, uh, to your point on access to the website, so this particular document, we're, we're, I don't want to clarify. So on ETR's website, the standards, or are you talking about on ours through ETR?
I was talking about on our website. And I ask, um, I asked for the link. So I was, I asked the district for the link, they sent me the link.
So you had this document?
All of that.
Okay. So this is a 130-plus-page document that has every single, um, health education lesson with regard to reproductive health and, um, disease prevention? We are in the process of linking the actual lesson to each one of these. I have a very small team and, uh, all of the schools, so we are, it's a slow process. This was created so you could actually see the alignment in every lesson to standards because we wanted to make sure that the first thing you saw was that there are no lessons that we teach that are not supported by state standards. So that was first and foremost. You have access to all of the curriculum through the other websites, whether it's logging in through ETR, all of the materials are there through the, um, there's a PDF that has the reproductive health and all the instructions to actually go onto ETR and see every single lesson that we have, K through 12. So this document that you were referring to, all that is simply a standards alignment. The document that's ahead of that shows you how to log in to ETR and receive access to all of the documents where you can see the lessons online, if that helps.
I, I, I had multiple phone calls from parents that were trying to access the lessons. I went online today to try to access the lessons. I could not find that through the DCPS website, but now I have them in my hand. And so as I'm listening to public comment and thumbing through these lessons, that's where my concern is.
Board Member Hershey?
So, um, through the chair, we, we had a conversation about this curriculum as well, and I have an advantage that you don't, in that I have a computer and I was able to pull up state statute, because aligning with what the state requires, I think, is really important for us to be able to do. So I just want to read a couple of things in here and just see where we fall. It says Florida schools are not required to teach sex education, however, they are required to teach comprehensive health education that includes instruction on teen pregnancy. Curriculum is not required to be comprehensive. Curriculum must include the benefits of abstinence as the expected social standard. If a school chooses to teach further instruction on HIV/AIDS, instruction must emphasize the benefits of heterosexual marriage. Curriculum is not required to include instruction on consent. Parents or guardians may submit a written request to remove their child. And then it says Florida has no standard on regarding, uh, medically accurate sex education instruction. And then it's state statute 481003.42 states that public schools must teach comprehensive health education that includes giving students an awareness of the benefits of sexual abstinence as the expected standard and the consequences of teenage pregnancy. State policy reads that course descriptions for comprehensive health education shall not interfere with the local determination of appropriate curriculum, which reflects local values and concerns. Curriculum must include a teen dating violence component. So I read all of that to say, um, that my, to ask the question is, is, it sounds to me like we've gone a little bit above what is required. And then there's also the, this part in here from state statute 48-1003.42 that does, um, give, um, the ability to make a local decision. So just would like to hear some, your thoughts on that. Are we going above what is required? And if so, why?
So through the chair to Board Member Hershey, I would say we are, we are going slightly above what is required based on our local data. So being that we are allowed to make local decisions using our information from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey and our Department of Health, statistical analysis of our health zones with STDs, HIV, and teen pregnancy, that's how we got, that's how we received funding in the first place to implement these additional programs, was because of what our statistics were telling us, what our data was telling us in the behaviors of our young students, our, our youth. So I think the question was asked at the board meeting, are we doing anything outside the scope of what we're allowed to do? No. But do we go above and beyond? I, I would expect that we go above and beyond in everything that we do, but within the parameters that, that we're allowed to. We're not doing anything, um, wrong. It all comes from a basis of abstinence first. That's how all of our lessons are presented. That's how our annual trainings are provided to all of our health education teachers. That is first and foremost. But in the event that they make these choices, we want them to be educated.
Thank you for that clarification. Other thoughts, questions? Member Anderson?
Thank you for being here and answering these questions tonight. Can you share with us a little bit about the data and statistics that you or the SHAC Committee have been using to support why this curriculum might be important for our students?
So through the chair to Board Member Anderson, I would have to have all of the data sets in front of me, of course, to speak accurately about them, but we are finishing up with our analysis of the 2021 data. And I think I put some updated statistics in your, um, in the gap analysis for you to see the average or the weighted analysis of how many students are currently sexually active, how many have been sexually active in their lifetime. So those alone are what we include to make sure parents are aware that it's not, you know, and actually, it's, it's a two-pronged approach, because we're excited that those numbers of sexually active students aren't as high, and we use that as a teaching moment for our students to say, "Hey, not everyone is doing this." But it's enough for us to try to make sure that we are providing accurate information in the event that they choose to participate in these behaviors. I am more than happy to provide, um, our HIV/STD rates that also align with the rationale behind providing this instruction. That is stuff that we get, um, monthly from Department of Health through our partnership. And that alone is, uh, I, I know I've discussed it with, with Paula in several meetings, and that information is, um, touching, considering that it comes from our youth ages 13 to 18.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I was just looking at the, um, updated statistics in the gap analysis and previous outcomes. It looks like we've got, um, this curriculum has been in use since 2012, is that correct?
Adopted in 2012, implemented in 13.
And over the last 10 years, we've seen a drop of nearly 14%? A, a decrease in sexual health behaviors, as indicated in the IRBS. The 20 lessons that have been selected for K through 5, is that 20 lessons in total over the five years?
Through the, um, chair to Board Member Anderson, 20 lessons kindergarten, 20 lessons, it's throughout the span of the year, 20 for kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth. Fifth grade, there's a little bit more wiggle room, so we have approximately 36 that are available for them to use. And each of the, the K through 4 goes through ELA, fifth grade goes through science.
Okay, so when I'm looking, which I'm looking at now, the, um, list of lessons for kindergarten...
You have the full list that was presented. We were asked last week to knock it down to 20. So I think you'll see like 25, 26 or so for K through 4. We were asked to, through ELA, they needed a little more time for, for, um, the block that they have. So we were asked to knock that down to 20 for K through 4.
So I, I can see 30 lessons available and 10 of those that have been eliminated.
And you'll see those listed as flex lessons at the end. So the ones that will say flex in the final document that will be updated before teachers go back, uh, those will be reflective of the 20 lessons that we would like for them to teach. The flex lessons are available in the event that they have additional time at the end of a day and they need something to fill that space.
We've had several, um, public commenters tonight suggest that these lessons in particular violate House Bill 1557. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Through the chair to Board Member Anderson, um, our publisher, just like any publisher or organization, they have a variety of views and standpoints and, um, things that they support. However, we have intentionally selected these particular programs because they support the needs of our students. But I can assure you that none of the lessons that you will read have any inclination of gender pushing, no LGBTQ identity. They are very neutral, they're very age-appropriate. I encourage you to sit down and take a look, I mean, if we looked at the lessons, I think, especially K through 5, there is not one that I raise my eyebrow at. And I know that I'm in this because I have very accepting views, but, um, I'm very confident in our selection, and I, I do not see any issues or connection with the overarching views of, of ETR as they apply to the curriculums that we've selected. Thank you.
Thank you. Other thoughts, other discussion items on this? Uh, I think folks, um, I think we, we have to, I think we have to go over and above when it comes to our community, when it comes to data, we have to be reactive to what the data says. You talked about the data. We also heard that some of the lessons, which to some folks may, may sound inappropriate to them personally, but we also have an audience that's bigger than just them. So that's why we have an opportunity for parents to opt out, um, to be able to have that. Because there are some students who need this education, um, who actually won't have that conversation with their parents, so they need it. And if you're a parent who does want to have it with them, that is your right. You have the opportunity to opt out. We're being diligent. Thank you for your diligence to put all of these lessons up there, um, onto the website for folks to see. And parents out there who are listening, who have any concern, go ahead and be, be ready to opt out now. Like, you, you have that opportunity to do that. But we also make, we have to make sure that we are keeping our community safe and educating them. And the data shows that there are students who are active, there are students who are, have a lot of questions, and some of them may not have that ability to have that conversation. So I think we have to make sure that we have this. And all the things that we, we read about, we have to just determine age appropriateness. I think that's what people are questioning, like, is it age appropriate? What is, we have to look at, what does the data say? If, and, and that's really big for me, too. So that's my one question is around, who determines age appropriate? Is that something that, can you answer that question?
Sure. To the chair. So I don't think any one person can determine age appropriateness. I would be lying if I sat up here and said that it was all up to me. That's why we... That's why we convene a committee of health-minded individuals throughout the community and welcome support from all individuals for input. There are professional organizations that do this for a living, but it's also very important that we listen to our local community. So with the assistance of SHAC and with all of our grant partners, including the CDC and those individuals and organizations, that this is what they do, that's where we look, that's where we turn to. We take guidance from those entities and make the best educated decision we can for our local community.
I appreciate that.
I have another question.
Board member Pearson?
Through the chair. This was a question that I asked in the workshop, I'm going to ask it again. In the gap analysis, according to the 2021 YRBS data, 11.3% of middle school students, and I'm going to break up the sentence, have ever had sexual intercourse.
Correct.
That means that, oh, I'm going to do math on TV, 88.7? Did I do that? Am I carrying all the numbers right? Okay, 88.7 have not. Math again, 88.7 is a much larger number than 11.3. And if I'm thinking about my statistics class in grad school, I would call that a majority, a big majority, have not. So just to the point that the chair was making, these lessons that Ms. Board member Joyce mentioned really seem to be geared towards a minority, a behavior that a minority of students is exhibiting versus a behavior that a majority of students is exhibiting, but the onus not to be included in that lesson is on the majority to opt out. And I would say the same thing, 32.5 of high school students have ever had sexual intercourse, 67.5, math, right, 67.5 have not. Again, the majority have not, but we're including lessons for the majority, for the minority who have, and expecting the majority, putting the responsibility on the majority to opt out. Am I understanding this correctly?
So through the chair to board member Pearson, I would like to point out that we have seen a drop in those numbers. And I would like to selfishly say it's because of some of the education that our students are receiving, that they are understanding the high risk, which is the intent of this, right? We want to delay any sexual activity. We want to remind them of the importance of abstinence. So the purpose of this instruction is to let them know the consequences of these actions. And if you choose to do so, here's how you protect yourself so consequences don't happen. But I would disagree with making the majority opt out because just because they're not sexually active doesn't mean they're not opting into our, or they want to opt out of our lessons. So I think those are two separate subgroups of individuals, and I don't think we can use, it's apples to oranges there. So just because they're not sexually active doesn't mean they don't want to get the education or need the education. I won't use any silly analogy like, you know, teaching any other thing to deter or, or promote an activity. But I think it's important to realize that just because we only have a small amount of students that are sexually active, that, that doesn't diminish the need for this education. And we actually use that as a talking point to help teens understand that peer pressure and everybody's doing it and those types of things, that's not true. Look at our, look at our numbers. We've seen a decrease. Not everyone is doing this. And you can still be, you know, a part of your friend circle or in the cool club if, if you're not doing so, because that's, a lot of times unfortunately, how our kids get sucked in.
So, follow up. So there's correlation and causation. I'm reaching way back...
Sure, I am not a statistician.
We're reaching way back to grad school on this, but there's correlation and causation, right? And I, and so correlation would be set of data and behavior happening at the same time. Causation is, the thing that we're doing is causing the data to go down. I don't, I haven't heard anything, I'm glad that we have a correlation. I haven't heard anything that, that proves causation. That, because I've, I have teenagers, and I've read about Gen Z, and I've, I mean, just in general, Gen Z attitudes are different from Gen X or Gen Y or, or others. I mean, I've read a number of articles that are just talking about changing attitudes towards sex among this generation coming up. And it may be because of the education, it may be because of something else.
Correct.
And so I don't, I don't know that we can comfortably say that the numbers are going down because of the lessons in the supplemental curriculum in the draw the line, respect the line, and not some other factor that's happening in the culture.
Do I agree?
You don't, you don't need, you're not going to be able to answer that. Board member Anderson, did you have your hand?
Yes, I was gonna, I have a question for Mr. Poole. Hi, Mr. Poole.
I just like to walk in.
I know, I just wanted to say your name. If we wanted to, this item has been presented to us in recommendation as a package of all of the health curriculum. If there was an interest in the board to pull just, just the ETR portion, would we amend the item and then can we table that for further discussion?
You can, yes.
And so what is the first, what is the first motion needed?
It'd be a motion to pull it and to, to adopt as amended.
So amend?
Yes.
So I would propose a motion to amend this item, item number three, to pull the ETR supplemental curriculum off the list and table that for further discussion?
There's a, there's a motion to pull, there's a motion to pull and the ETR piece from this and table for discussion. Do I have a motion and a second on that?
I motion Pearson second.
Motion second by board member Pearson. Discussion on that amendment.
Could you tell me, please, who was the initiation?
Motion by board member Anderson, second by board member Pearson, to pull ETR, table for discussion. Discussion on that amendment. Okay. Well, let's vote on the amendment and then we'll come back to vote on...
Just, just so we can be clear on what we're going to vote on, my suggestion or my recommendation, my motion is to vote on the item.
Right.
Or are we voting on the amendment to remove?
We have to vote on that first and then come back.
And the item is amended, right?
We're voting on the amendment.
Vote for amendment first and then, it'll be mute if it doesn't.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure.
Board member Jones?
Thank you, through the chair to Ms. Paul Britton.
So it's really tabled.
Well, back up, the motion, make sure the motion is to table...
To table, that's what I, that's what I wanted to be clear on, is it, are we tabling the ETR portion? Is that what we're voting on or are we voting on an amendment? That's what I was...
The amendment I thought you offered was to table this for discussion later.
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to be clear for the record.
Is the motion to table to a time certain or just table indefinitely?
I think we should have more conversation and bring it back next month. I mean, I think at some point we need to be able to get the health curriculum in front of our students. And it is, you know, pressing. So I don't want to, I don't want to put our health educators and our teachers and our students and our schools in a position where they can't get access to the curriculum they need. So I think this is timely. We need to make sure that we have more conversation about what the supplemental curriculum, if any, should come back and we can vote on that particular piece next month.
Yeah, but you, one way to kill an item is to table it. And therefore I can't support you tabling unless there's a time certain. You table it to the next board meeting?
Sure.
Do we have a workshop or are we tabling indefinitely?
Yeah, I'd like to table it till next month.
Till the next board meeting?
Next board meeting, September.
Oh, sorry. I think you need to say the September, because we have an emergency board meeting next week.
So we need a date? Well, it's August.
Would, Mr. Poole, would that be a time certain?
Be a time certain to the September, the September meeting? It'd be a motion, second, no discussion, straight up or down vote?
September 2nd is the date.
The meeting is what, 12th? Table to September 12th?
Labor Day, most likely.
Is that a motion?
Oh, is that what it is? I don't know what the date is.
Is it, is this, is it the September 12th?
Yeah, that's, that's the next regular board meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, September 12th, table ETR until September 12th.
Board member Hershey?
So we're going to vote now on tabling that, is that correct?
Yes.
And my...
To a time certain.
Can we have discussion about tabling that? Nope.
Yeah, there's no discussion on if it's tabling for, or tabling for a time certain. So right now we have a, a motion on the floor to table to a time certain the ETR portion of the health curriculum, and that time certain would be September 12th. So that is the motion. And since there is no discussion, I'll go ahead and call for your vote on that motion.
Hand vote.
Need a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand for tabling to a time certain to September 12th for the ETI portion of the health curriculum. All in favor? It's four, four to three, so the fours have it. Is that for...
So it's tabled?
Is tabled, so that ETR portion of that is tabled. So now we are back on to either discussion or a vote on the item as amended, the health curriculum item as amended. So further discussion now that the ETR portion is now tabled till September 12th. Board member Hershey?
I just want to go on record, I did not support tabling that because I don't see the need to, we've had a workshop, we've had the, we've had the agenda for a couple of weeks, and we've had time to meet and have a discussion. I have a feeling the vote in September is going to be the same way as if the vote would be in September. I don't know, and that's, that's the reason I was not in favor of, of tabling it. And I just want to be clear that what we're voting on now is solely on the, the textbook and not the supplemental.
Correct, correct. Other thoughts, other discussion on this item as amended? Okay, thank you. So hearing, hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. So we're now voting on the, the health, health education curriculum materials for use in 2022, 23 as amended, and that is minus the ETR piece, which has been tabled to a time certain of September 12th. So I will now call for your vote, and it's going to be a hand vote once again. So call for your vote on, once again, health education curriculum materials 2022, 23 as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Chairman, we need an initiation and a second, please.
Move, approval, second.
Okay. I thought we did, okay.
Not as amended.
Oh, I, okay, Adam as amended, need a motion and second. Board member Anderson, second by board member Hershey. Now I will call for your vote. Curriculum materials used in 22, 23 as amended. All those in favor, we're doing a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, by your mo, by your action, you have passed the health curriculum 7-0 as amended. And once again, we'll, it, the ETR portion tabled to a time certain, which is September 12th. Thank you for that discussion. We'll now move on to chief of staff, public hearing and vote revisions to chapter 5 board policy, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Green. What is your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter 5. Policy 5.25, student code of general appearance.
Now open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to chapter 5.2, student code of general appearance? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion and second.
So move.
Move by board member Anderson, second by vice chair Coker. Are there any board members who wish to speak to this item? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'm going to ahead, call for your vote. We're good on, and we're back on. By your action, you have passed this item 7-0. Now moving on to board member travel, that the Duval County School Board approve and confirm travel listed below for official business of the district and it complies, and that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. September 7 through 10, 2022, Atlanta, Georgia, COSBA Urban Board Alliance. Jones, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, ask for a motion and a second.
So move.
Move by board member Pearson, second by board member Hershey. Are there any board members who wish to speak? Seeing, hearing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved board member travel 7-0. Now moving on to superintendent travel, that the Duval County School Board approve the following superintendent travel, August 31st, 2022, Orlando, Florida, leading now public trust training. Ask for a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Move by board member Hershey, second by board member Jones. Any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and call for your vote. By your action, you have approved superintendent travel 7-0. Now moving on to for the record, so I'm going to actually go ahead and start with board member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to remind the listening public to please go out and support the mileage increase. It's really needed. Our mileage rate has been reduced each year for the last 10 years, and if it stays stable, we would not be in this situation. We have teachers that are leaving, and experienced teachers who are leaving each and every week, and we believe that this will allow us to retain high-performing educators. Secondly, I want to congratulate Ms. Catherine Fujinetti, who moved Pine Dale from a D to a B, and as a result, she's being promoted. I'm losing a very good principal, and Ms. Joyce is getting a very good principal, and but she, she, Ms. Fujinetti deserves it. She's been outstanding asset, I think. Board member Willie lost her a couple of years ago as assistant principal, and now it's my turn. So I just want to congratulate her on the work that she's done over there at Pine Dale. And whoever follows her has some big shoes to fill, Dr. Green, remember that now. And thanks to the district and staff and Chief Burton, and the reunification exercise they had in Mandarin last month, I wasn't able to make it, but I saw a lot of reports on the news, and it was very well received, and I think parents can be reassured that we're doing the best we can when there is an incident, to make sure that parents are reunited with their students as quickly as possible, effectively and efficiently, and keeping them safe. And third and lastly, I want to thank the Chance Light, changing the directions of student lives. They're going to start at the Pride Unit at Eugene Butler, and they've already hired outstanding staff. They are training, they're doing a great job, and I just wish them all the best because we've had some, many, many challenges at the Pride Unit there. And I think this would be a big plus for not only the students there, but throughout the district as we see the results of what happens at this location, we can use that in other locations too. So I just wish them well and hope everyone has a restful next couple of weeks and we can get back to work again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. We'll move down to live. Board member Joyce?
Thank you. I want to congratulate Ms. Jones, who was the principal at Westview K8, on her promotion, and welcome Ms. Fujinetti to Westview. I'm really excited about having her lead that school. There's so much... There's so much work that's being done by Ms. Jones to improve the school grade, and I know that Ms. Fujinetti will definitely continue that work, so I'm excited about that. And I want to just, summer's coming to a close, and everybody's getting ready to go back to school. So I want to thank the administrators for working all summer to get ready for receiving teachers and students back to school. There's a lot of fun themes going on around the district, and I know there's a lot of excitement in the air. So just thanking our administrators and our teachers for coming back, and our kids, and I'm excited to walk in and visit schools and to see all of the wonderful things that are going on in Duval County Public Schools.
Thank you, board member Joyce. We'll go over to board member Anderson.
Thank you, Chairman. First, I would like to say thank you again to Principal Phillips and Chet's Creek for coming tonight and sharing about their wonderful little elementary school. And when I say little, I mean not little at all. They, they just do incredible work with our kids, and I'm really grateful to have such a successful, outstanding example in my district, and excited to join the Creeker family, of course. I want to remind parents and community members, not just parents, but also community members, that you can sign up to volunteer in our schools if you have, you have to go through a background screening, so you might want to go ahead and check now to make sure that your background screening is still good, and/or get that process underway so that you can come and help out our kiddos. When I was going through and doing the Read USA book fairs at the end of the school year, the number of volunteers that were in, in our schools, in classrooms, helping with the book fair, but also helping with other, you know, things happening in the school, was just so heartwarming. I think the kids, when they see people coming in from the community, parents or neighbors, to work with them, to be there, to support them and their teachers, it really helps them know that they are in a warm, loving, cared-for environment. So if you have time or interest, please sign up to volunteer. The, a question has come up related to our millage in the arts and athletics piece. And, and I don't know that I, I feel like the arts and athletics piece is an important component and shouldn't be overlooked. Yes, I think most of it, you know, 75% is going to traditional, 20, 12 and 1/2% is going to our charter schools. So we, we have, you know, almost 90%, 88, 87 and 1/2, we're trying to do math here tonight. I was an English teacher, is going to teacher salaries, traditional and charter school teachers. But the arts and athletic are important as well because these, these are pieces that haven't been touched in a really long time. And our students oftentimes are engaged in their education because they are getting to participate in things like arts and athletics. So when we, we want our children to learn the basics, certainly, but sometimes getting a student engaged or excited about coming to school is the foundation for learning. And having robust arts and athletics programs really helps us attend to the whole child. And because we have auditoriums and equipment that hasn't been updated in decades, you know, it doesn't make a child feel excited to participate in these things. So I know that there is question about like, why, why is this little sliver thrown in there? And that's why. And I think we really need to understand that when we take care of teachers, certainly that helps take care of our students. But this portion of arts and athletics that hasn't been touched, that we get this opportunity to infuse some funding, is also a really great opportunity for improving student outcomes. So please don't forget to get out and vote. There's lots of important elections on your ballot. Again, as a reminder, the early voting starts August 8th, and we'll go through the 21st. No voting on, on August 22nd, and primary election day is August 23rd. So mark your calendars, don't wait, get out and vote.
Thank you, board member Anderson. We'll move down to board member Pearson.
Have a great school year, sorry. Have a great school year.
Okay.
You too, and your kiddos too.
So normally I brag on District 3. This time, I have a back-to-school theme. For those of you who do not know, and I think I'm, hopefully I'm speaking to the community and not so much to parents or teachers, school starts on August 15th. And so I have a number of items under a back-to-school theme. The first one is a student safety item that I've been working on a lot this summer, but not in the sense that Chief Burton's going to be talking about. I'm talking about getting to and from school safely. If you have flown recently, there's that announcement of, if you put a bag in an overhead bin, and when you land, they say, be careful when you open the bin because things have shifted, may have shifted, and, you know, they may fall on your head when you open the bin, or your seatmate's head. It, it's kind of that way in Jacksonville. I can definitely say in District 3 with new development and traffic patterns. So if you are, especially with magnet schools, if you don't live in the neighborhood where you go to school, you may want to trek out, do a preliminary drive to school to see if the lines on the road, the traffic patterns, the development around you, grand openings, any of that is happening around the same time that school is opening. While all of these are very exciting, they will impact your commute to school. And so to the community, I would say, please be cognizant that schools, it's been kind of nice this summer, no flashing school zones, you've been, fewer people, no buses, really, on this. August 15th, that changes, we go back into our school pattern. And, and so please consider leaving early for work for a couple of weeks, and especially in certain areas. And if you are driving your student to school, please leave plenty of time. Don't think about when you left at the end of school last year and got there in time. Leave earlier so that you can get your student to school on time and deal with the extra traffic at the beginning of the year. Slow down, especially pay attention to the school zones and school crossing, school crossing pedestrian crossing signs, some of them are new from, in the spring. And look for students on foot or on bike. We talk about healthy lifestyles and, and the opportunity. Please understand that some students live too close to their school to have bus transportation, and so they will be walking or riding a bike. So please look for students walking, crossing streets, and on bikes. Parents, this is to you. Please follow the traffic patterns that your schools have set up for drop-off and pickup. I, I know that it's frustrating to sit in line, and I know that if you don't leave enough time, you could be late for work. But going rogue and dropping your student off at a different location actually can endanger your student because the school will not have prepared for adequate personnel to cross your student at different places, and you may actually be putting your student off in a place where he or she has to walk through the car line in order to get to the school. So please just leave, leave earlier and, and drop off, follow the pattern. Your schools are aware of congestion and will be trying to make things the best they can. Lastly, to students, and this would be to parents as well. Parents, please talk to your students about safe crossing and how to cross streets safely. Also, talk to them about being aware and not wearing AirPods when they cross streets, or looking down on their phone as they're crossing a street. But please, we all need to work together on this. I am, I am very concerned that in some of our areas, we could have a student hit. And so we really, really need to all work on this as a community. Secondly, campus cleanups. I have three schools in District 3 that I know of this Saturday that are going to be doing campus cleanups. I hope there are more around the county. I recently, I'm representing the board on the Keep Jacksonville Beautiful Commission and found out that if you are doing a campus cleanup at your school and you register it with Keep Jacksonville Beautiful, they will give you bags and other supplies and let you borrow equipment if you register your campus cleanup. And you can do that at jaxnhorg.coj.net and simply register your cleanup and, and you can pick up the supplies. So that's, that's pretty cool, and that's something that your PTA or friends of will not have to pay for bags for that. The third, this Sunday is countywide organized prayer for our schools. Some of you may be in congregations that are praying in the congregation, your congregation. Some of you, I know I've been invited to two prayer events at schools that I'll be going to. But if you don't have that opportunity and you are a person in a faith community or a person who prays, please consider just going to your neighborhood school. You don't even have to have kids in that school, but, but please consider going. Pray for the safety concerns, pray for the teachers as they're coming back, pray for whatever you feel like God's putting on your heart. But please be praying for our schools. Secondly, I would encourage some people to come here and, and be in our parking lot and pray for us. As you can see tonight, we deal with some, some really, which to some people may seem very black and white issues, but they are emotional and, and they are difficult. And we need great wisdom to make the best decisions that we can for all students in Duval County. And so please pray for us. Please pray for the superintendent and her staff. They are 12-month employees and have been working very hard over the summer. Pray for our teachers going back as well. And pray about our staff vacancies. I, on August 1st, enlisted a group of friends to pray every day that, that God would provide the students, the, the teachers that we need to fill the vacancies. And I'm continuing to do that. So I would ask you, I don't know how it's going to happen, but I, I do know there's history of God doing things that didn't seem like they should happen naturally. So I am, I am praying and asking that he will close that gap even before August 15th. And then for yourself, pray about how to get involved. Pray about volunteering, pray about subbing, pray about teaching, pray about being a para, pray about being in our maintenance department. We have, pray about being a bus driver. We have vacancies everywhere. And so I would say, in addition to pray, also think about how you can get involved with your hands and feet as well. Because I think there is precedent for that scripturally as well. To our returning staff, I want to say thank you. We're so glad that you're coming back. To our new staff that have been hired, welcome to DCPS. We're so glad you're here. And to our staff who've received promotions and are starting new positions, congratulations. Job well done. So the last thing I have on my list is something that I picked up through constituent emails and through social media. And I'm one of those people who actually reads the article and then I read the comments. And, and because important questions come up. And so I have two questions that I've asked for answers to, and I'm just going to read them so I don't get anything wrong. The first question is, why is the school board asking for a 1-mill increase if they've just voted to decrease the millage rate? And Chair Willie covered this a little. The district's primary millage rate for operating revenue is called the required local effort. The rate for the required local effort is set by the state, not by the school board. So what we voted on is what the state gave us, and then we voted on it. In 2010, the required local effort was 5.3 mills. The new required local effort for this year is now down to 3.2 mills. That's a reduction, 2.1 mills, just doing math. The school board has no authority to change that number. We can only implement what the state directs. This means potential school revenue from property tax increases is largely offset by a declining tax rate and property value caps. Our only avenue under state law to increase funding for local schools is to go to the voters for approval. So that was question number one that I've seen a few times. The second question is, how will the 1-mill increase work with Mayor Curry's proposal to decrease property taxes? City taxes are completely separate from taxes for schools. The district receives no funding from city tax revenues. It is the state, not the local mayor, that decides the required local tax levy for each school district. Again, the only option available to the elected school board to increase funding for our teachers and students is to make the case for voter appeal. So I am making the case for voter appeal between August 8th and 21st, or on August 23rd. Please seriously consider our request for a 1-mill increase on property taxes. And we have more FAQs on our website. If you have other questions, you can probably find them there. These were just newer ones that have come up.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Board member Hershey?
Thank you. I was at the USPS store the other day, and I sent Dr. Green and Ms. Schultz a text message because the young man behind the counter was thrilled that he is going to be a para at Mount Herman, and he was just beside himself, and he said, I can't tell anybody here because they've already done the schedule, so I can't tell you which USPS store I was at. But he was very excited, and it was just really neat. I had on a DCPS shirt when I walked in, and he was like, oh, you're DCPS? I'm going to, you know, and so he was excited, and so I'm hoping that that enthusiasm carries on. I do want to say a couple of things. I was at Crown Point for the reunification. Chief Burton, you did an excellent job. I thought the timing of that for our district was impeccable. I mean, some, we didn't, the date was set, we didn't know that things were going to be happening in the country, and that the trial was going to be going on with Parkland, but I think it was very reassuring for our community to know that DCPS is serious about school safety. It was very, and it was great to observe and be a part of it and to understand the process. And I would encourage board members in the future to participate. It was very hot because we were the observers and we had to stay outside, but it was very informative. And so thank you, Chief Burton, for your effort and all that you do for the community. On that note, I'm not going to elaborate as much as board member Pearson did, but Mandarin, when school starts, traffic increases. And that means Old St. Augustine Road, Greenland Road, and Loretta Road. And just be aware, it's going to take longer to get places, and school starts August 15th. Want to thank Mr. Colbert for the work that's being done in the esports lab at Mandarin Middle. Now, the only thing in there now is the floor. It's a really cool-looking floor. And Mr. Colbert had, just envisioned this design, it's about, it's three colors. And people walk in and just get excited about the floor, so I can't wait to see it with the desks and the screens, and it was, it's become a hit when they do school tours and they take people in there. There's a lot of excitement in the community, so thank you for that. And I'm, I'm sure it will be growing throughout, throughout the district. I also want to let people know that September 24th, Mandarin Oaks will be having a farm share event. And I don't know about you, but I can't believe that it's August. I don't know where June and July went, but just if you know anyone who may benefit from that, September 24th, there'll be a farm share event at Mandarin Oaks. And my final thing I want to say is, is I reached out to the board office this morning, and I said, look. I gave them a list of the elementary schools in my district, and I said, I can be there for a half-day if they want me to do anything on these days. But if they want me to substitute, I mean, I've been a substitute teacher, I even taught middle school, I'll be there for the whole day. Well, before this meeting, I had three schools that had already said, okay, we know, we'll, we'll need a sub on this day. And one of them's at the end of August, so I'm going to have to be drinking a lot of energy drinks that board member Joyce introduced me to, to make it through those days. But I'm, I'm excited about that opportunity and look forward to a great start of the school year.
I love that. Thank you so much. Hi, Chair.
Sure. I want to start with, and I didn't pull up for consent with comments, I figured I'd address it here. Item number 20 that we passed this evening that has to do with the Fort Caroline Auditorium. We're finally getting it moving. I just wanted to make sure that I said thank you to Dr. Green, Assistant Superintendent Sora's, as well as Ms. Begley. I know that this is a project that has been challenging, but it's something our community needs. In particular, it is part of my opinion of Cheryl Grimes' legacy. She started this, I think board member Hershey and board member Jones would both know a little bit about the history, and this should have been done years ago, way before Dr. Green even came here. And I know that it is not easy to be, get it, get it across the finish line, but I want to say thank you for making sure that her legacy on this item is, is fully in place. It means something. That being said, I do want to, I'm going to add to board member Pearson one thing that we all need to be mindful of as we're going back is there are orientations and teacher meet and greets, and opportunities to go walk through school campuses. And I want to make sure that I encourage our parents to go and be a part of those. It is a great opportunity to see how you can best support your child in your classroom. In particular, I want to give a shout- In particular, I want to give a shout out to what's being called hashtag Team Arlington Community Back to School Day. We have got some, you know me and my Arlington, we got, we have stuff. On August 6th, and I think this is the first time I've ever seen this happen, Scott Stewart, the principal of Arlington Middle School, got together with the principal at Parker, new principal Hudson, and also the principal at Parkwood Heights. And you have to understand, these three schools are sitting basically on one campus. You can throw a stone from one to the, one to the next and the next. They got together and they're going to have an orientation all at the same time and allow the parents to move from one community to the next. It'll start over at Arlington Middle. Again, it's from 10 to 2 on August 6th. I encourage parents in that community, please log on to the websites and pick that information up. There are going to be some great community partners there. And so you'll be able to learn all that's available to your children in those schools. I want to say thank you to all of the principals and assistant principals. I know Board Member Joyce just said that. But I, I don't think we can, I was a principal for a number of years. I supervised principals. I don't think we've ever seen a time when principals have gone through as much as our principals are going through right now. They are making such difficult staffing decisions, course offerings decisions, budgetary decisions. And I just can't say enough to them to say thank you for continuing to stand up and do the job that I loved throughout my career. I want to also make sure that I say thank you to Dana Krisner, our Deputy Soup in particular, for helping to guide some of those decisions. I know she took a personal hand in some things and it made a difference with some principals that I know. So thank you to her. And then finally, just to welcome back to our teachers and our school personnel, the para professionals, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers that we have more of this year than we did last year, our parents, and most importantly, our students. We are excited about a new school year and it's going to be a good one.
Thank you so much. Yeah, just to reiterate what, what everyone else is saying, just back to school is happening. Number of events happening in, in different communities. So check those out if you, if you are able, willing to just go support, lend a hand, or if you need some of those items. In addition to that, tax-free is happening right now, I believe, through the 7th of August. So take advantage of that if you're one of those families who have, have kids going into schools or need some of those items. It's a great time to go out and purchase those items. Got to vote for that one-mill. We need to make sure that we are doing all that we can in this community to make sure we're doing that. Yes, we, we have to do this for our teachers. At the end of the day, if you, if we value our teachers, we have to make sure that we show out our value with showing up and doing this half, this one-mill. It's important. You see the budget that we have. Inflation has, has hit all of us. But at the end of the day, it's hit our teachers too. So we can't just say, it hit, it hit you, but we're not going to do anything about it. We're going to do everything that we can. In addition to that, I know I want to thank the staff for all the work that's going on. I know Vicky and others, just making sure that we're, we're doing everything that we can to get as many teachers in these doors as possible. The professional development, the mentoring, the coaching that already goes on, the, the surveys, the items that, that we're interacting with our teachers. So we want to just make sure that we're pulling every single lever and this one-mill is one of those things we can do that. Also, oftentimes we have a lot of energy in our meetings and even in the media about a lot of things that are, that catch attention, but there's so much great work. I just want to point to some of the things that happened in this agenda today. The Embry-Riddle relationship that we have, the dual enrollment relationship that we have with FSCJ. Mr. Colbert came up to me right before the meeting and said, we just did a lunch with 100 interns, 100 student interns came and worked for Duval County School, Public Schools in the IT department. So all these great things are happening and oftentimes they don't get the media attention that they deserve. But those are the things that happen on a daily basis that, that these folks that are sitting in these front rows in our admin are, are doing on a daily basis. So I don't want us to get distracted by everything. And everything is important, but we want to make sure we're also focused on some of these other pieces that are happening right in front of our eyes. The last piece I'll just say is the opening of schools is happening. One of my favorite times of the year, as a former teacher, I, I can vividly, I can just smell my classroom and, and setting it up with all the hot blue guns and paper being cut and billboards and, and poster boards, all those kinds of things. And I know there's a lot of great energy. I got three in my house that are all going to be, I got a kindergarten, a first grader, and a third grader in our schools, and they are pumped. I'm talking about, they are pumped. They're like, is it today? I'm like, no, it's not today. It's not today. But I think they're just as pumped and their teachers are excited. They're already getting communication about what the themes are going to be. And it's just an exciting time and I want us to sit in that moment too, because we have folks who are really excited about the start of school year and we need to embrace that. And I'm going to challenge the board. I think most folks have already mentioned they're going to be stepping foot and doing some substitute teaching, but I'm going to challenge us all to step in. We have a deficit. So if you have the time, put, put a little bit of that energy in. I know Vicky's like, wait. She's like, all right, what days do you want to sign up for? But let's do that as a board to show our solidarity. I know many of our, of us already have, have signed up for that. But that is what I want us to do. And that is the energy that I want the community to feel as well. Board Member Anderson said it, let's not talk about it, let's be about it, let's get into our schools. Let's get into our schools. You can do it now. Before, we were, we were closed because we wanted to keep everybody safe with COVID. You have the opportunity, go and sign up, get all your background checks done, get in our schools. Make sure you do that because we need you. We need you in our schools and kids are excited, very, very excited about, about it. So thank you so much for all the work that is happening, all those teachers who are, who are sticking around and, and still here. Oftentimes we talk about the ones we don't have, but there are so many folks who have been here for a long time doing great work in our schools. So thank you to them too. So happy opening. We won't see you before that and we'll see you in some of our schools. I'll be dressed up, ready to substitute and do all the things I need to do. But thank you so much for that. On that note, I will go ahead and move to adjourn. Motion second.
You can't move it.
Oh, I can't move. I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
I'm just reading, my reading.
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Joyce, seconded by Board Member Pearson. Of all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
This is what you want the record to say?
You want the record to say that?
No.
All right. By unanimous, we are now adjourned. Thank you.